With the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, this meeting of this public meeting of the zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative public access measures in place. The meeting is being televised via Falmouth Community Television and real time public comment can be addressed to the board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. For Zoom login instructions, you can go to www.falmouthma.gov/zba. From there, there's a link bringing you to the Zoom app and the virtual software needed to run it. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Horry. I'm the chair of the board. Ken Foreman is the vice chair. Bob Dugan is the board's clerk. Ed Van Kuren is a full voting member. Scott Zalinski is a full voting member as well. Mary Berry is an associate member and James Morse is an associate member. Noreen Stockman is our zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello is our recording secretary for the night. Justin Shanahan is with us as well from FC, I'm sorry, from the Falmouth IT department and our friends with FCTV are helping us coordinate having this live on FCTV. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by the town, meeting, and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and also from the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or an opposition or just might simply be a question about the nature of the project. The board recently adopted modified rules for public comment. For public comment, you can use the Zoom virtual software and again, that link is located at www.falmouthma.gov/zba. At the appropriate time in the hearing, we will open it up to public comment. We ask you to raise, click the raise hand icon, at which point I will recognize you as the chair. You can provide your name and address for the record along with any question, comment, or concern that you may have about the project. The board will then either close or continue the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approval of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts Journal Law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. Okay, so turning to our agenda for the night, we do have a brief public comment period followed by one continuation, three new public hearings, and items on our open meeting agenda. So up first is public comment. This public comment portion is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So for those who are there here waiting for to provide public comment for something else that's later on the agenda, just stand by and wait for that. But if anyone would like to speak about anything that is not on our agenda tonight, go ahead and click the raised hand icon and we can elevate you in a moment. We will move on to our first or only continuation of the night. We have the continuation of application 50-20 Village at Brick Hill LLC, 511 Brick Hill Road in West Falmouth. And Attorney Glenn is the applicant's representative. Justin, if you could elevate Attorney Glenn, I think he's, yes, he's raising his hand as Paul Glenn, please.
Mr. Chairman, because we received the late information today, 2020 Stormwater, et cetera, we would need to continue this either way.
Thank you, Bob. So just to open before Attorney Glenn, I believe he's elevated. You'll just have to unmute yourself, Attorney Glenn. So we are in receipt of some information that we received this afternoon. I haven't had the time to review it, I know, or I assume other members of the board haven't been able to fully review it.
Okay.
Well, Attorney Glenn, I should also start before we start. Members voting on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and rest of the board. So my name's Paul Glenn and Michael Solamando is the builder developer who's here with us too tonight and Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering is here with us tonight too. So since we met last, we did, we receive a peer review report from the consulting group in Boston that was rather lengthy and it took a while to respond to many of those comments that he had. And we did, we did, we have not all them, but most of them we have taken care of. There's an amendment amended application that we put in with an amended plan. Some of the highlights, and just to remind people, this is this 6.7 acres up on Brick Hill Road, abutting the Lutheran Church and the high school, it abuts it also, Falmouth High School. And it's a proposal to build affordable housing and we changed the number of units from 32 to 28. And we added sidewalks, I think as several board members asked. We submitted some landscaping and we submitted a lighting plan. We show some plans for a bus stop and a common mailbox and we create an easement, an area for an easement from this development to the church development, which is now being proposed gradually as a YMCA. So those are some substantial changes. I'm not sure who's been able to see it. And there, the lots are changed. We amended, we amended the waivers for zoning because the lots, most of them changed. They get bigger by eliminating four lots. And we had to have a new pro farmer in there also that the developer, the builder, four less houses, four less sales, it changed the numbers around a bit. That's in there. And I put a little narrative in there telling you what I just told you right now really. And other than that, it's same place, same idea. Here to answer questions.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Glenn. We will turn it to board questions then. Ken, do you have anything?
It may, you may, it may say this somewhere in the materials you submitted, but which of these units are designated affordable?
It does. It's like every fourth one designated affordable. You know, we spread them out. That isn't, that isn't something that's written in stone. That seems to be what, what people like. I made a case a number of times to no avail that everybody in this place is a good person and it's nice to have the, it, there's not really a problem with having the affordable ones close together. Usually the kids, the ones with the most kids and it makes it easier for them to play. But that's, that's a minority opinion. We, we have them spread out every fourth unit, every fourth home throughout the development.
So for example, unit 21?
Unit lot 20, yes.
Uh huh. I, that is designated as an affordable one.
Okay, that was my question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Well, those are my questions. That's my first question at the moment and I'll, I'll let others chime in. I'm sure many other questions are out there.
Very good. Mary, anything?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is, you mentioned that every fourth unit is affordable. What about with the sales? Is that you're going to sell three units that are at market and then the next one's going to be affordable?
You know, I have in the application something that would be a little more generous to the developer to help them get the cash flow going. But something as you explained is a, is an acceptable alternative too. I think that's the more traditional way of doing it. I suggest in the application here that at the beginning, there'd be some more market rates, but that then all the affordables get built and then you have market rates at the end. It's kind of security for the project to make sure that affordables do get done before all the market rates get done. I, I think boards have expressed that concern before. So, I mean, we're open to suggestions on that. I've had one client that built all the, all the affordable ones first, just to show all the market people that these are nice homes and nice people live in them, you know? So there's no one way of doing that.
So just to make sure I understand, you were asking for eight markets, then all of the affordables, and then all the rest of the markets?
Yes, I think that's what I put in.
And then the other question I have has to do with the bus stop with the mailboxes. Where does that, where on the site is that going to be and what kind of buses are you expecting?
Well, really just school buses for now, you know? And it's out by Brick Hill Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Scott, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to continue this, I'll reserve my questions for the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. James, any questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Ed?
Not at this time.
Okay, Bob?
So will you be phasing this in the same way as the sales plan? You'll be building eight and then waiting and then going on the next four bills and then?
That's a request. That's a request. That's not something, that's a little unorthodox, I'd say, doing it that way.
But are you planning, are you planning to build it phased like that? You would actually build eight units, then wait, then build the next? Or you doing a build throughout, but then doing the sales based on so many markets first?
Well, you know, that, that depends on how everything goes here and everywhere else. But it would be easier for the builder to just go down the street and you pave as you go and you do, you do four, you do eight at a time there like that. So we're happy with doing the three one thing and we could do it that way.
So as the subdivision gets built, so what's the time period you're thinking of from start to finish?
Well, and I have, Michael's anxious to talk about his project. Can I have him chime in yet?
Is he with you, Attorney Glenn, or is he, or does he have his own account?
He's, he has his own account, I hope. I see Mike Borselli. You know, it's at least a year. So I've talked to him enough about it, but if he isn't available now, it's at least a year, probably two years to, to build that. No matter how strong the market is, it's just, there are only so many people that can work, you know?
No, I understand. We just usually like to get a breakdown if it's going to be phased. Is it a one year, two year, three year? We have some projects that go three years, some that go one.
All right.
That's, that's the only question I have right now. I'll reserve the rest for the next meeting.
All right. And we're working on getting him elevated. Attorney Glenn, are, are you in receipt of Attorney Kirk's correspondence dated February 2nd?
I am.
He represents immediate abutters?
Yes.
Can you, can you comment on that correspondence at all and what you may have planned in terms of?
Before I forget, could I answer one of Scott's questions from the last meeting that's about the, before I forget there, about the agricultural land? I was in touch with both the county and the town agricultural person. They each responded, it's very nice land, very good soil, but it's not primary agricultural land. And they sent me copies of maps, I can do that. I can follow that along to Noreen if you'd like, or you just could accept that conclusion. I don't know, we could do it either way. But Ed, yes, Ed, I appreciated Ed's letter there, I think. So his neighbor is right next, his client is right next door. Let me give you a, and from what my client and from what Ed Kirk tells me, Mr. Donlin has a beautiful, beautifully landscaped yard. You know, this is, this isn't just your normal little landscape. He's very proud of it and it's very, it's, it's very well done and we're concerned about that. And the other thought is that I just want to emphasize to, to Attorney Kirk and to the board, this is a housing starts program. Every home in this development will be bought either at market rate or by people who qualify for a loan with their own credit. Nobody with bad credit is going to be moving into this development. People sometime when affordable housing comes along, they say, we have to have a big fence to keep them out of the, to fence them in. And so as a, as a concept, I really object to that. As a particular thing in this situation, I understand, you know, he has this beautiful place. I just know, I think his worry, he's over concerned that there are going to be people coming out of their own backyards. I mean, some kid must at some point, someone's probably already done that, cut through the yard from the woods of the high school or some cyclist looking for the trail. It happens to everybody sometime, but a real problem I don't see here. We're planning, we're planning a fence, a split rail fence to enhance the appearance of the development. And from what I see in a plot plan I just got today of Donlin's property, that it's substantial, about 150 feet, I might be off a little bit on that, but it's pretty substantial. The house is substantially set back from where, from where the majority of the development of this project, project is, and it's extremely wooded. It's not just kind of wooded, you know? There's a tremendous buffer there between them. So I don't, I don't see how, I think that'd be a bad idea to put a eight foot fence blocking off it and make the development look lousy. So that's my comment to it.
And so just to clarify, Attorney Glenn, you're saying the existing conditions will be the buffering for that location in addition to split rail fence?
Yes, the split rail fence is for aesthetics. The, the buffering on its property is large and it's substantial buffering.
And you did mention tonight the easement in the area of the church, which will be the proposed YMCA is, what is that easement? Would that be an access easement in order to get to the YMCA?
Well, you know, it's big enough to be in the, we don't know what's exactly what's going to be here. We don't really have much of a good idea at all what's going to be over at the Y, but I think it's 20 feet wide.
I can speak to that.
And be a easy access for whatever they want, whatever they need and for people and for the people who live in our development to be able to go over to the Y.
Mr. Chairman, could I speak to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Borselli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering and I represent the applicant. Could I share my screen briefly? I can put the, point these elements out to you.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm sharing the overall, the overall site plan now and if, if I could, I'm going to zoom in on a couple of elements. The easement we're talking about is a 20 foot wide easement that connects from the new development's roadway through the open space on the developer's land to the boundary of the Christ Lutheran Church. This was proposed to be 20 foot wide to facilitate the installation of a water main connection. It came as a result of a comment from the former water superintendent, Steve Rafferty, because the, we're going to have a water main in our property and I think Mr. Rafferty was being, you know, proactive in anticipating the YMCA developing the abutting land and it's always good to loop water mains when you can. So our client, Mr. Solamando, agreed that he would allow an easement that would allow for a loop. In fact, the site plan itself, which I'm now sharing with you, shows in blue, you can see the easements with dashed lines and you can see in blue the water main connection. And it says future connection to the YMCA. So Mr. Solamando was willing to even install this section of water main and cap it and put a gate valve so it could be extended in the future for the use of a loop for the YMCA. It's 20 foot wide, so it can also be used for emergency access, pedestrian access. This is, this area here is an open space and it's where the, where some of the drainage is going to be installed. So it's sort of a multi-purpose easement. There is another easement on the property that I'll share with you as well. And that is at the end of the cul-de-sac. And it's shown here as another 20 foot access easement, 10 feet on lot 14 and 10 feet on lot 13. This is an easement mainly for the residents of this development, high school age kids probably more than anyone, but also, you know, general population that lives in the village, they can gain access to the high school property over here, which is a, it's a significantly sized woodland. So, you know, it's a shortcut, I suppose, for kids going to high school if they walk to school. So I believe those are the two access easements on the property.
Mike, can you show them where the bus stop would be?
Oh, yes, I can do that as well. So the bus stop is proposed right here. It's a 12 by 16 bus stop and it's also the mail kiosk. And we designed it to be tucked in this corner. This dashed line represents the road right of way. We dashed these lines on the site plan versus on the definitive subdivision plan that'll be solid to just show where the proposed property lines are and the proposed road layout for the roadway that provides access to the units. So you can see this dashed line goes around this bus stop so that it's within the road, the new road layout. You can see its relationship to the edge of the pavement. So there's a sidewalk too. So the theory is the kids walked on the sidewalk, wait for the bus here. Bus comes, I don't know if they'll pull into the road, which by the way, we, we've named Josiah Way after the original brick kilner that had the first kiln for making bricks on Brick Hill Road. I believe it's his first name because his last name was already taken as a road name, so I believe. But anyway, that's where the bus stop is proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Borselli. Any follow up questions?
A question about, about that, because looking at that and the position of unit 28, which is like right next to the mail kiosk and the bus stop, I'm just wondering if those units can be pushed a little further into the development so that there's, that whoever lives in unit 28 isn't, you know, have 50 million people stopping every five seconds right in front of their house.
It might be bought by somebody that, that likes that, you know? If it's a family, they?
I don't know anybody that likes having a bunch of strangers stop right in front of their house every minute.
Well, we, I suppose we can look at that, you know?
Chairman, may I ask you a question before this is open?
Sure, sir.
Is Ken finished?
I think Ken's all set. Mary, did you have anything?
Yeah, I had one other question, which is the abbreviation AST. What does that stand for?
In reference to?
ASC? Is that the consulting group?
AST.
Oh, AST. What is that, Mike?
I don't know what we're referring, where it's referred to.
Is it on a document that you're reading it or? Is it on our plan? Because I don't know what that means.
Oh, it's not a drawing. I mean, it's out of pages of text supplied by one of the, you know, one of the documents today, I think.
Well, since it's continued, you can always get back to me to tell me what that is. I couldn't find it defined on the document.
And that was?
And the other thing, the other thing is, um, and maybe you've supplied it and I didn't see it, but in, I'm looking at the most recent revisions you've provided. I would appreciate having, um, a plan that shows where the abutters homes are in relation to this.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, if I could share my screen?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Um, on, on this plan, the abutters houses are shown, um, as a, in response to a request. Page one of 11 shows, um, this, this land is out, this is in a very remote area. It's mainly woodland all around. Um, um, to the west is town of Falmouth, uh, under the, under the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission. It's all woodland. To the north is some of the Falmouth High School. Uh, it's, it's woodland and it's some distance before you get to a developed part of it. To the south is Christ Lutheran Church land. And we've shown the, the, the two structures on the Christ Lutheran Church property here. Um, we've shown the existing, uh, house on our applicant's land and his detached garage. We've shown the detached garage on the abutting land of Donaldland and his house here for reference. There's no other houses.
That's fine, that's fine. Um, I was just looking at the most recent binder that I received and that probably is in the prior one. Because the binder that we just received didn't have, have that in it.
Well, I can't speak to that, but all these revised plans were submitted.
I have a black binder that was part of it. Oh, I see. I'm, I'm sorry. I, I take it back. It was in, under section one, so I'm, I stand corrected. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mary. Scott, did you have a question or did you want to?
Yeah, Attorney Glenn, just for the record.
Yep.
Um, I had asked if, uh, it was your testimony last, uh, hearing, if the application was 100% completed. I'm going to ask you the same question tonight.
Well, I hope so. I, I know something happened the last one. We missed a few questions there, but yes, it is.
So is that representative of what you turned in this time? Is it, can I, can I put my finger on the questions I asked the last time?
Yes, I, I'm not, I don't remember every question you asked last time. I, I remember you asked about the agricultural, but we, um, yeah, it's all filled in. Yeah.
Thank you. So that's your testimony.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any other follow up questions from the board?
Yeah, just one question, and this is regarding the house styles. So relating to the affordable units, um, what are the different styles that are designated for the affordable units? Are they, uh, one of each style or how is that represented?
They, in, in the initial application, we submitted plans of all the houses and it's a mixture. I think there are four different style homes and they definitely will be mixed up. The, the, they're mixed between the three and the two bedrooms and they're mixed between the styles.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so we will turn it over to public comment right now. If there's any question, comment or concern.
Mr. Chairman, could I say something, say something else here to?
Go right ahead.
Perhaps make, we'll continue it, it seems, and just to make the next, um, the, the next there. So people, people ask, so there's going to be on the plan lots that are not house lots. And the plan will be that we'll get a deed at the end of it from the owner, the developer to a homeowners association that'll be responsible for, for doing all that, okay, for taking care and maintaining it. And there'll be some association dues that'll be part of it. The other thing, I, I'd just like to, if, if you go back and read the consultant's report, I want to point out that the paved part of this road is exactly conforming to subdivision standards. We're looking wave as far, the layout is less, but the paved part of it, and it's perfectly safe for fire trucks for, it's the same as any of, for fire trucks, for garbage trucks and for snowplows. And I just, um, want you to keep that in mind when you're looking at the application a little more detail, that it, it'd be, wouldn't be right to impose additional conditions on affordable housing development that aren't in a normal subdivision there. This is some things that usually come up. So thank you for letting me say that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Attorney Glenn.
I have a question about that.
Go ahead, Ken.
Go ahead, Ken.
So are you saying that the layout conforms to subdivision standards, 60 feet wide?
No, the, the layout does not. We, we asked for a waiver, but the paved part, the part that if you drive in, 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 in most subdivisions, people end up just landscaping the part that's within the road layout. Um, in this situation, the road layout is two feet less on both sides. It's 40 feet instead of 44 feet. But the asphalt, the part that's going to be paved, it, it, there's no difference. It conforms to subdivision standards.
Okay, grade and all that stuff.
Grade, yeah, I, I mean, Mike spent a lot of time on it. He, Bill, Mike said to answer that yet.
Yeah, so, so, um, we, we treated this road as though it's a subdivision as far as width alignment and grade. Um, and there's road profiles, there's standard details, the drainage, all of that. Everything with regard to the construction and design, the design of the road and the infrastructure associated with the road, water, um, um, and drainage and pavement thicknesses and pavement widths and berms and all of those elements are, there's, are exactly in a, in accordance with a by rights subdivision. Because it's good practice, they're, they're good standards. Um, there's no need to ask for waivers for any of those, uh, elements. Um, we actually, um, we went through the initial comments of, um, DPW engineer Schluter that were read into the record at the original hearing. And as recently as about an hour and a half ago, I went through the whole list. And I, I think we addressed at least 90%. We agreed and were, uh, commented or addressed or revised at least 95% of his comments. Some of them were unclear or, or gagged to me. Uh, we went through the peer review, um, engineer from DSC. And, um, there are a couple loose, uh, ends on drainage that I need to try to work through with him. Um, but again, everything was, uh, virtually everything was addressed. Um, some of the drainage comments that he made, I'm not sure they're even applicable to this, uh, project. I've never, I've never designed drainage, um, in any other way than I, I have in Falmouth for 35 years, but there was some comments about some other, um, practices that I, I've never, um, been required to do. So that was a little, um, disconcerting to me, I guess, and I have to talk to him about that. But as recently as, uh, last Tuesday, there was a subdivision approved by the planning board of by rights subdivision. And I did the drainage the way I've been doing it since I've been practicing engineering for, since 1984. So, um, it was kind of, uh, interesting to see these comments about other methods of drainage I've never seen before.
So, so Mike, the one other big concern that came up in the initial presentation was Steve Rafferty's concerns about the water protection district. And, uh, can you just refresh the board's, you know, mind on exactly how those issues are being addressed?
Well, I wasn't really sure. I agreed with Mr. Rafferty's comments. Um, the septic systems are designed to the Title V standards. We're not in a coastal pond overlay district here.
We're more than half. Water protection, resource protection district.
We're in a resource protection district, but we're, we're more than, uh, we're, we're about a half a mile from the waters of Long Pond, which is the, uh, nearest receiving waters. And, I mean, this, the fact pattern here is similar to two other affordable housing projects as far as its relationship to Long Pond, uh, one on Locust Field Road. And the workforce housing on Gifford Street are all, are both, uh, as close. In fact, the Gifford Street project is closer to Long Pond. So, um, I, we believe that the drainage is designed in accordance with the subdivision, um, sorry, the zoning bylaw standards that were quoted in the report. Um, and the septic systems are designed to meet Title V standards. And I know, know of the specific provisions necessary in a water resource protection district as it relates to wastewater that would require any enhanced treatment or anything like that.
Okay.
All right, I was going to turn it over to the public comment. I'm sorry, Scott, were you? Nope, you're muted, Scott.
I'm sorry, I looked through this application again and I, at the risk of sounding argumentative, could someone go to page four of 11? I have a couple of questions on this page in particular. I don't know if it would be Mr. Borselli or Attorney Glenn.
Which ones out, Scott? Is it on the, the new black binder that we got?
And I'm just curious on, there's a number of yes and no questions with regards to coastal pond overlay, zone two, area of critical environmental concern. And it's a yes or no answer, and nobody's filled it out. And I'm just curious why that is. It's not N A. And I've, I gave the attorney the opportunity to look at it and answer the question correctly, but it isn't complete. And I just want to know why some are filled out and some aren't when it comes to wildlife corridors, area of critical environmental concern, zone two. They're just left blank. And I just would like to know why.
Well, somehow that's, um, that's an oversight.
That's what you told me before, Attorney Glenn.
Hey, excuse me?
That's what you said to me on the first meeting, and I tried to lead you out of that when I asked the question tonight. And it's exactly the same as it was when it came before us.
I don't know what happened there. Yeah, Mike and I have talked about all those issues. I, I don't know why they don't show up when we print the thing.
Well, we can provide you with, I guess, Mr. Glenn could provide you with an updated form, but I can answer the questions. We're not in a, in a, on a coastal pond overlay district, to my knowledge. We're not in an area of critical environmental concern and we're not in a zone two. I know those things, because if we were in a zone two, we could not have the number of developments. It was one of the very first things we would have checked. And, uh, Falmouth GIS maps and all the mapping and Falmouth indicate we're not in a zone two. We are in a water resource protection district. That, that is clear.
So if you could, if you could review those on the original application, anything that's blank and just resubmit that section filled in, because we actually need it for the file. Because without, without getting the actual filled out forms to the file, they're not considered complete applications.
What I'm going to have to do, I think there must be something wrong with my computer or something. Because Mike and I went, went over all of these, uh, both, I, we, I may, they may not be, it may not be as neat. I might have to do it in, in pen itself and, and submit it, if that's okay with everybody. The, um, yeah, Mike, Mike has been very diligent in that right from the beginning, all these issues here. But I will, yes, I, I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Glenn.
And, uh, Ch- Ch- Tim, hurry. If, if it's possible to share my screen one more time, I can, I got the town of Falmouth GIS map open and I can show you. It's, it's a couple clicks, but the form needs to be filled out, but I can.
Sure, go, go right ahead. And I, and, and I'm, and I'm sure you went over all that material with Attorney Glenn.
Can you see the GIS map?
We can see it, yeah.
All right, so the yellow, th- there's our puzzle. You can see where we are relative to the high school. You can see where we are relative to Long Pond. The closest coastal pond overlay district is way over here off the page. It's, um, and it's for Great Pond, which is in East Falmouth. It's a watershed for Great Pond. Yeah, uh, so you can, you can check these things. Here's the AC EC, uh, and then when you refresh the screen, the only AC, EC in Falmouth is in Waco Bay. So we're not in an AC EC zone two. Um, again, there would be cross etching on the plan. If I zoom back, you can see the zone two to Mayor's Pond over here. Um, I mean, it's, it's a mile away. Um, um, water resource district? Yes, which we know. Uh, we've addressed and asked for specific waivers within the application.
Wildlife corridors?
Wildlife corridors, um, I believe there was a comment, I don't know about the wildlife corridors.
Okay, we're in the, we're in it.
Oh, we are in it, okay.
And I've asked.
I'll let you share my screen now. Okay, because that isn't filled out either. Does the project cross any MIPA threshold?
No.
Okay, that's not filled out either. So the reason I ask, and I'm so diligent about this, is because sometimes if a yes or a no isn't filled out, it leads to, well, if yes, explain such and such. But if you don't have the initiating yes or no, it takes the second part of that question right out of the game. So that's why I'm a stickler about if the permits, I mean, if the, the application is complete, then it answers all our questions and we don't have to ask them. So, thank.
It makes sense, yep.
There's another one, uh, referring to, uh, notification of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs that is not filled out.
Yeah, but it, it, it should know. Yeah, I don't know what hap-
All right, so for the next meeting, if, if you could review, and I, I'm, I'm sure both of you did your due diligence and, and reviewed everything, but for some reason, it's just not printing out, whatever the issue might be. Um, if you could give us a completed part of that section.
Yeah.
For next time. Uh, do need to turn it to public comment if anyone's out there who has a question, comment or concern. Uh, go ahead and click your raised hand icon and we will get to you shortly. I see one, that's Michael. Could that be Mr. Salamondo? Possibly.
It, it could. I get a text from him saying that he can't get on, so it.
Sure.
It could be him.
I had, I had, I, I'm a Michael too, and I had chatted and texted in, can I be impaneled? If that's the comment, that was me. Because I was wanting to participate and I couldn't.
Understood, uh, so.
I do have a quick question. Um, and I guess this would be for, um, Mike and Paul. Do you plan to have the roadway be, uh, constructed such that the town could potentially accept it as a road in the future?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes. Okay.
In fact, we were, we were curious as to why there were comments about snow removal and trash pickup not being a lot, uh, you know, what, what, what makes this road such that you can't have snow removal like every other road in Falmouth? I mean, even private roads in Falmouth have snow removal for safety reasons and trash pickup. I mean, these folks are going to be just like probably most of all of us. We bring out our barrel and our recycled barrel and the truck comes and picks it up. Um, but yes, the road's going to be designed, you would not know the difference between this road and any other recently constructed, by that I mean from the mid 80s to now subdivision road in Falmouth.
All right, uh, if we could elevate Michael, please, I have a feeling it might be the developer himself, but we'll, we'll find out.
Yeah, that's probably him. He's got to unmute himself now.
All right, you're, you have to unmute yourself, Michael, and activate your, your video. All right, you're you have to unmute yourself, Michael, and activate your your video. I'll just say again, if there's any public comment out there, any question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and and click your raised hand icon and we will get to you shortly. That's strange.
Two Michaels.
Two Michaels.
Hi.
Oh, there he is.
I can't see you now. I I unmuted it, but I can't see the, ah damn it, I'm so sorry.
No, no worries. We are getting a little bit of feedback there. Okay, so we got, we have video. All right, we have audio.
Well, I I
Welcome.
Forgive me, I I I feel like a dinosaur and I I I've been trying.
No worries. We we are getting a little bit of feedback there, so I don't know if you have multiple um.
Yeah, I'm gonna I'll shut that. I've been trying on. Hold on. Let me. I I even I had my wife up here and uh and we we had the computer going. Now we get a laptop and I had my cellphone. And I've been trying to somehow get on and and it it just hasn't uh, forgive me.
No wor- no worries. Well, you're you're loud and clear now with with no feedback, so that's good.
Okay, well, uh I don't know if if you folks have any question. I've been just trying to get in and try to chime in, but most of almost everything was answered to uh that I could see, but if anybody has any questions, uh I'd be, you know, happy that that weren't answered. Uh uh I'm here, I'm I'm humbly, I will uh try to answer them.
Very good. All right, and just for the record, I'm not seeing any uh public comment at the moment, but I'll turn it back to the board is does anyone have any specific questions for uh for the developer himself that hasn't already been addressed tonight?
Just regarding the HOA, do you have a price structure set yet?
Uh no, not as yet, because we don't uh because I don't know whether we're going to be doing the uh snow plowing, the trash removal and all in in uh in those uh things that uh need to be included in something like that. I I, you know, I just trying to, you know, wrap around exactly what the the board will allow and, you know, will uh me me to do there and and what we gonna what we have to put on the homeowners. Once we once we have those uh parameters in line, then we'll uh then we can set up a budget.
Hey. I can ask. Yeah, it I'll ask you the same question I I I asked Paul, which was if you've got this area where there's the bus stop and the and the mailboxes, and then you have basically units twenty eight through twenty three, and then there's a little chunk of open land there on lot twenty two. Why can't you just shift those houses a little a little further to the north to give a little more space there? Pull pull unit twenty eight back from the road and back from the mailboxes and bus stop a bit.
Yeah, well, i- i- it's an idea. I I, you know, we we were just trying to keep everything. You know, you try to do everything you can. Um we uh I I thought we could be up and I thought we could have that out towards the road a little bit in the uh but uh a little bit closer to Brick Hill. But uh evidently, that's yeah, that can't happen, so we.
Not necessarily, Mike. Sorry to interrupt. We could look into shifting it south to right within the road layout if we we would have to get do get permission um from the town uh through the Board of Selectmen for that. So we might be able to move it away from unit twenty eight without having to move unit twenty eight by moving, and it might be more practical to move it closer while keeping safety, of course, in mind. Um a little bit closer, there's a significant width, it's like twenty five feet.
A significant width, you uh that uh, I mean, it's, you know, it's i- i- it's a good fifteen. I I think it's I don't know what it actually scales out to, but it's a it it's quite a shoulder and.
And there's also a possibility uh that perhaps there's a better location for the bus stop within the uh development. And maybe a more centrally located location for the bus stop, perhaps in an open space midway up there in that point, uh you know, the bus could come into the street like it comes on all side streets and not have the kids queuing up on Brick Hill Road with the traffic um there and the and the mailboxes would be more conveniently located and further from all the units.
I would rather have it in um, I'm talking to the board as well. I would rather have it, but the uh the only one that I would have to see was that I'd have to check with the Postmaster General if if he would uh allow, you know, his men to come on to the uh uh, well, you know, the the uh the mailbox uh people would uh or the mail deliverer would would come on to the site. Uh sometimes they like to be at the beginning, and that's why we we I kind of directed it there. But I think it would be better served because the uh, you know, people that if more than one person backed up to get there, it would, you know, the congestion in the
Yes.
entrance. I think it makes more sense, you know, towards the uh, you know, to the midway point of the uh project.
Yeah, I would agree, and you've got plenty of, you've got a big chunk of open space there.
We get a chunk of open space in that meadow uh where that first septic system is.
Right.
That's gonna be like a meadow type of uh arrangement.
Is that H twenty there where that?
Well, well, it um it isn't, but where vehicles would it's not that close to the road. It's it's a significant distance from the road, so it doesn't need to be H twenty. I think that's a better location, and I first in experience, um I live in North Falmouth on a cul-de-sac that's five hundred feet, and the mailboxes are midway down. Um for convenience for all the uh property owners.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of kids queuing up next to Brick Hill.
Yeah, me either.
People go too fast.
Mm-hmm.
Myself included.
Rushing to work in the morning, it's not, it's a not a good mix.
Uh we do have a public comment that came in through the chat. Uh this is from Mary Donnellans. Uh if I'm mispronouncing that, my apologies, but I know they're the butters uh next door. Uh it says, hi, sorry, I do not have a video access. I am the Donnellan's daughter and wish them to address number three from Attorney Ed Kirk's letter. Mr. Glenn had mentioned it is a very wooded area, but all the trees on the planned development will probably have to be cut cut down. Uh Attorney Glenn, I think your testimony earlier in the evening was that it was your intention that the existing the existing trees would stay and act as a buffer. Is that correct?
The the Donlin House is over a hundred feet from the lot line, and they have it's substantially wooded that their property, that would be the major buffer. There wouldn't be a a natural, a large natural buffer like that on the development side.
I don't think it's fair to count their property as a buffer. Your property needs to provide a buffer. The buffer is on your property, it's not their property.
So that's that split rail? Would that be up against the property line, Attorney Glenn?
They're looking for a fence, you know, I I mean, Mike could come up with some type of extra landscaping perhaps, but the idea of the fence to fence in the development. It it just would make the development look lousy, and it sends the wrong message. So I I mean, maybe we could enhance the landscape um there a little bit there, but uh you you know, you think you just don't always get a big buffer. You know, that's the beauty of this location. It's naturally buffered by all the neighbors in a sense, by the neighbors, by.
The wrong messages, Attorney Glenn.
Sends the wrong messages that this development is different than others and that the people have to be fenced in.
Well, you wouldn't.
Send the message to, who who are you referring to it sending the message to?
The people that live in it.
If, so the the majority of them, am I correct?
Excuse me?
That the the project itself, the the majority of it is surrounded by either.
Is most of it is.
I'm sorry, my, I'm cutting out a little bit here. So the major the majority of the project is surrounded by either conservation or town-owned land, so the only the only butter is is the Donnellans, and I'm I'm sorry, I keep on mispronouncing their name.
Well, the town, the town on land is in the back and on one side, and the other property on the other side, even though it may be a you know, a Y or whatever they is right now is is private property, so you are bordered on both sides by private lots.
So we we wouldn't be looking at fencing in the entire property if if is it the north side? Mr. Borcelli, if you
I couldn't share the screen.
Could you share the screen again?
Yeah.
It's the west side.
It it, I think the area of concern um with regard to the Donnelys, the Donnelys live here. There's an opportunity, the the one of the septic systems is designed to be here. There is some regrading and excavating, but there would be some natural trees that could be retained, and it could also be supplemented if necessary with some uh evergreens spotted throughout here to add more buffer to the buffer. I know it's on their property, but there's woodland here. Um so we could make uh we preserve as much as possible here and supplement with some additional uh buffering on the on the edge of the natural tree line, if you will, after the heavy lifting is done on the construction over here. If that makes sense. So this side, of course, you know, is close to the property line. And then over here, there's not, you know, this is their land, but the the this is a detached garage. This is the house. So it's really like the concern, the to answer the chat question. Uh yes, trees will be removed here, but they can be uh they can be replanting of uh evergreens for a buffer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Borcelli.
Yeah, the Don, Mr. Chairman, the Donlin letter also requested the the lights. Had it had an issue with the lights. We we tried to, the the proposal is to have a solar powered light packets. They, Mike can tell you more about them if you want, but it 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 wouldn't create a large light pollution, but it would create some light um that I think the board requested at the last uh the last hearing. So they they have an issue with the light too.
And we typically required uh, is it dark sky compliant lighting?
But Mike Mike has studied these, Mike, the developer has studied these lights and has seen them in action in many places. He I think Mike's ready to answer that for us.
Well, we we used them in the last in in uh the last development that we had in uh in in Hangham, and it was uh it it was, matter of fact, it was thirty, it was thirty two homes there in Ridge uh and um Ridgewood Crossing, and and they, I know that they were pretty well received, and they're they're run on solar. And the the land, the the these poles here are, they're they're only, they're six foot six. And um and then the, of course, the light itself is about uh seventeen, eighteen inches. And uh on on top of it, so, but the homes that that they're gonna be in front of are are ten feet. Uh you know, that that's most, a lot of them are one story, or one and a half. Uh they're 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 a couple that are two. But most of them are 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 smaller uh units and uh or homes, and, you know, they're 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 at least ten feet high. I mean, if not, if not fifteen feet high, you know, to to see through the uh, you know, the uh I I think it'd be half of the Donnellans to see the lights, but I mean, I can cut back, but I just thought this this would do the do the trick uh for the, you know, for the roadway and the uh and uh and like the like the driveways of each one of the uh or the entranceways to the driveways uh of each home. It's up to the board. I can cut it back.
So you're proposing uh one light post like that in front of every house? Thirty two light posts?
Yes. One post, one post per
And what what about at the rear of the homes? Is there uh?
No, there's no back of the homes, no.
Maybe maybe some kind of covenant that they, especially those on the west side of the Donnellan's property cannot put in, you know, big spotlights.
I I don't think they would. It really doesn't.
Well, you don't think so, but they might.
Yeah, you can.
There's nothing in the agreement that uh that states that that's the case in the permit, then.
You could condition that.
Exactly. That's that's what I'm arguing.
Yeah.
Well, state code, there's got to be a, you know, a light at the doorway of, you know, of of a of the entrance to the rear of a home. You know, so, you know, you do a a classic uh, you know, something tasteful, you know, like a a wall lamp.
Right, but you could, you know, you could condition and limit no spots, for example.
Yeah.
We have another public comment again from Mary. It says, another concern is the retaining wall by lot twenty five, whom will be taking care of this after building uh built. We expect our tree roots, et cetera, not to be destroyed if built. Does this being built up cause storm runoff into our property, especially the eastern corner by number twenty three?
No, it's actually a downgrade. It's down down, it's downhill from their property, and it uh and it's it's two feet at best. We can even slope, we can even play with the slopes.
We might be able to eliminate that wall, right?
Write that all together. It's no, it's nothing. It it, it's it.
It's two feet, it's very low profile. It was more of a landscape feature. It can probably be eliminated. I understand her concern.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Well, I, one other thing I would say is, and and maybe it's because you need to do so much regrading that you need to cut all the trees. Is that the is that the reason?
Yes, unfortunately, you'd like to keep some of them. Some of them we will up by the meadow, up in that area and the in the back of the Donnellans. A lot of the trees were kept in that area, but we we will have to remove, you know, of course, where that is. What what you find is sometimes when you when you try to save some, and there there's some good spec- I it's unfortunate, you'll always try, but unfortunately, by the time you get through with the pipes, and by the time you get through with, you know, with 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 the with the foundations and you're regrading. If you cut the, if you cut one of the feet of feet of roots on on almost any tree, okay, it's gonna eventually die. And instead of going out on an acreage, it's gonna cost you a fortune afterwards to take it out. You know, with a crane or whatever, you know, it it's uh, you know, it it just, it's 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 not something that I like to do, but it's something that I've learned uh uh that it uh it comes back to bite you, okay, badly uh in a year or two. And if it does, it won't be me, it'll be the homeowners that are gonna have to remove.
Well, I just, I, you know, something we've been toying with is is maybe marking specific trees for preservation.
You'd like to try it, but how do you know where the where the roots are? And when when you see even in these, e- even in these clear areas where we're digging out some of these, I mean, there's a lot of them that we can save and and like in the open space, uh, you you know, just take that area for one. But I'm planting, I don't know if you saw the the tree uh, uh the landscape plan where, you know, it we're, you know, for every, you know, there's there's a tree, you know, there's gonna be a a specimen tree in 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 each yard, and then it's in by the meadow, there's a, there's a bunch of them.
Sharon's planning with them now, Michael. This is the landscape concept plan. This is the idea. He he here, he's getting a little a little uh, is it using a little too much autistic license? Let's put it that way.
Right, well, that's that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, this need, this is going to probably, this this squiggly line is supposed to be representing where the natural tree line will be. The reality is, uh Commission of uh Board of uh Foreman is it'll be where they, where I'm tracing with the hands. And so this area will probably have to be supplemented. That was what I was trying to describe earlier. If that if that makes sense to you.
Is it possible that the buildout is too dense and to 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 afford the project any natural vegetation?
I don't know that I'm gonna answer that question.
I'm not.
It's a question that I just threw out. Anybody feel free to answer it.
No, I think I think it's in, you know, where where it's got, where it's got, where it is and where it where it's comfortable being.
Okay, thank you.
Build that road and do everything else, yeah.
Okay, so I know we are looking toward a continuance with that lead information received this afternoon. Just in terms of expectations for our next meeting, Noreen, do do we need our peer review person, whoever it might be, do we need them for them for the next meeting?
Yes, so I've been in touch with the peer. We were proposing to continue to March eighteenth if that works with everyone's schedules, and the peer engineer would be available for that date.
Very good.
That that works for the three of us. We talked about this ahead of time. So I appreciate the that date, actually. Thank you.
Very good. Would anyone like to make that motion then? Not everyone at once. There's a few board members on mute. Does anyone want to make that motion?
I will move to continue this to March eighteenth at six thirty here in Zoom Hall.
Thank you, Ken. All right, continue to March eighteenth here at Zoom Town Hall, made by Ken and seconded by Ed. We'll do a roll call vote. Ken?
And Foreman, I.
Bob?
Robert, you and I.
Ed?
Ed, Dan, you and I.
Scott?
Otzelinski, I.
And TJ, hurry, I. Attorney and everyone on your team, thank you for your time tonight, and we will see you March eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. Thank you.
All right, so that was our continuation for the night. Moving on to our new public hearings, up first, we have application seventy two dash twenty, Murphy, forty Oyster Pond Road in Falmouth. And for the applicant, if we could get Attorney Clower elevated, so he'll be ready to go after Bob reads everything in.
So application number seventy two dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty eight of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Brendan J. and Sarah G. Murphy of Noel, Mass have applied to zoning board appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild a preexisting nonconforming detached garage, adding living space above, on subject property known as forty Oyster Pond Road, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. Uh, from Health Department, Oyster Pond Road, there's four bedrooms assessed and a four bedroom septic system installed in nineteen ninety seven. The room above the garage meets the definition of a bedroom. The plans show a proposed cased opening in the TV room, eliminating it as a bedroom. Therefore, it appears there is no increase in flow, so Health has no issues with this proposal. Uh, Fire Department has no issues with the project is drawn. Uh, Concom refers to an approved permit from Concom. Conservation Commission voted to approve the proposed work under a negative determination for request for determination of applicability, and they did attach the permit. From Engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Oyster Pond Road is a public right of way in this area. There are no alterations proposed to the right of way. Any changes with the right of way would require filing a permit from the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way. Where the project is before the Conservation Commission, we defer to the Commission for their sediment and erosion control requirements. This site slopes down from the road, and there are no nearby town stormwater structures. And we do recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells or stormwater infiltration measures at a minimum. Planning, no comment. Again, there's another one from Health, but just reiterating that the room above the garage meets the definition of a bedroom in Title V and the town's local regulations, FHR fifteen point zero. The approved septic system from nineteen ninety seven is suitable for four bedrooms total. And this was before they had the plans from the main house where they added an opening for the TV room. Uh, Water Department, the water service should be inspected and have a minimum size of one inch. Uh, in a Sessors Department, no comment.
All right, thank you, Bob, and the.
Did we lose TJ or am I lost?
I'm back. I've been having troubles on my end.
I wasn't sure if I was the one who was frozen or otherwise.
No worries. Thank you, Attorney Kyle. Our the voting members on this application are the regular voting members. And before I freeze again, Attorney Clower, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmet Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Brendan and Sarah Murphy, the owners of forty Oyster Pond Road. They're here tonight seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming garage on their property. This lot at forty Oyster Pond Road is just over half an acre at twenty two thousand and four hundred and eighty square feet. It's located in the residential B zoning district. It is subject to Conservation Commission, as we've noted, as there is a vernal pool at the rear of the property. Presently, there's a four bedroom, single family dwelling with a detached garage on the site. The lot coverage by structure is only nine point three percent, well below the twenty percent that's allowed. Uh, and it is nonconforming to side yard setback being three point eight feet, where ten is required. Otherwise, it's conforming to all the other setback and lot coverage requirements. The applicants own this property for a few years now, but they've been making significantly more use of it since the pandemic started, and they're seeking to improve the usefulness of the properties as well as the aesthetics. And and to do so, they're proposing to raise and rebuild the existing somewhat dilapidated garage. The proposed garage would be in the exact same location. No change to setback or lot coverage, but the same size and in the same location, but will add additional space above. This space will be used primarily as an office space. The Murphys have young children, and as someone with children of a similar age, I can attest to the difficulty of working from home, especially without a dedicated space. When I when I spoke with Mr. Murphy the first time, I I could hear the kids in the background, and I I I felt for him. So the we've submitted plans as to the primary dwelling, which which show the elimination of an existing bedroom. As such, the bedroom count will remain at four. This does require a special permit under two forty, section three C. It's which states that a preexisting nonconforming structure may be changed by special permit, provided that it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board should consider the standards of two forty, two sixteen, and whether or not the alteration creates a new dimension of nonconformity, impairs views and vistas, or reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformity created. The existing nonconforming setback is unchanged and otherwise conforms to applicable setback and lot coverage requirements. There's no impact to views and vistas, and certainly in line with the other houses in the neighborhood. This proposal will constitute significant improvement for the applicants, providing them more useful space, and it will not be substantially more detrimental than what exists. I don't believe there's any adverse effects that would overbalance the beneficial effects for the applicants here. For these reasons, I believe that the board can grant a special permit, and I would ask that you do, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. We'll turn it to board questions. Ken, anything?
Just wondering if we have this, you know, this came up with another project recently, I think, the means of egress, two means of egress. Is that an issue here?
There are multiple means of egress from from the first floor of this structure. There there's a door.
What about the second floor?
Well, as as happened with the last, the last application was a forty four Grand Ave, and in that case, there was one stairway downstairs. And 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 in our speaking with the Building Commissioner then, he said it's not dissimilar from a a single family home where you might have one stairwell to the second floor, but the egresses are on the first floor.
Okay, so you 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 that issue's been raised and discussed with the Building Commissioner.
Well, in in the past circumstance, we did that. We re-rose that question with the the last application, forty four Grand Avenue.
I just I just wonder if we could get something from him confirming that for for this one.
Well, in in that in that case, he he did ask for a second a second entry point on on the first floor, other than.
Yeah, I recall that. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so there are there are two entry points on the first floor and on this on this proposed structure, other than the grass.
Right, but my my under my recollection is that on the forty four, you you had those, both of those means of access were, uh, the stairway led to both of them.
Yes, and that's that that would be.
That's not the case here.
Okay. I.
It's it's a distinctive characteristic. I'm just, it'd be nice to know that he approved.
Okay.
That's it for me at the moment.
Thank you, Ken. Mary, anything?
No comments at this time.
Thank you, Mary. James?
I think at this time, thank you.
Ted?
No comments, pretty straightforward.
Bob?
So I would just emphasize Ken's comment again about the two means of egress, because it is one stairway to one entrance, and it is different than Grand Ave. I do have a question on the side. It seems like they're putting in a set of sliders to access the garage besides the garage doors. Is there a specific reason for that?
I'm not aware of any any specific reason for it. I think it was just aesthetically what they were looking for.
So do they have any future plans on trying to finish off that lower space at all, since they're putting in sliders?
No.
Is there any plans for any heat on the lower level or just the second floor?
I I don't know the answer to that question.
So maybe if you could find out about that. My only other question would be regarding setbacks and I I just had a question before, and it's funny to go to Noreen. So on the three point eight feet on the setback, that is to the sidewall, not to the overhang, correct? I know we had another property where we went by the overhang of the roof. And this roof overhangs on the side that has the three point eight. Does that cause any distinctive issue at all? So I guess a question to the to the administrator, if on these three point eight side yard setback, the roof overhangs on that side farther than the actual sidewall. So what do we go by, the overhang or the sidewall?
No, so when you have an encroachment, the distance to the lot line should be the closest point. So if there's an overhang there, the survey should be to the overhang, not to the foundation wall.
So if we could have that adjusted on the plan?
So I think you just need to confirm whether it was to the overhang or to the wall.
You know, Mr. Clower, what they if they did it?
I don't, but I but it has been confirmed for me that there's no heat on the first floor.
Right, so if we can find out if that measurement is to the overhang, and if not, if they can adjust the plan so that it shows for the overhang. And that's all the the comments I would have.
All right, thank you, Bob. Scott?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Uh, and Attorney Clower, just to clarify, because I think my internet was dipping out a little bit when Ken was making his comments, how this project differentiates from another project that we saw recently in terms of the egress and access. Uh, I'm looking at sheet A one dot one. And I s I see in the in the rear of the proposed garage, there's that entranceway. And if I'm reading it correctly, it looks like that that's just a that's a stairwell going up to the second floor, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and there's no access to the garage itself from there?
No, it appears not.
Okay, and is is that a window or is that another proposed proposed egress toward?
That's a window. A window can serve as knee grass, depending on the size.
Okay. All right, that, uh, that clarifies my issues with that sheet. Thank you. Uh, any follow up questions from the board? Noreen?
So there was a one notation that I had, which was that the architectural plans indicate, I believe it's two stairs on the side of the garage. The plot plan does not show those.
Thank you, Noreen. Any other questions from the board? Mary?
Yeah, I have one question, which is, on this side where the garage is, how I didn't see in the package, and maybe I missed it, the a butter on that side, how close is that home to that garage?
I I think it's I think it's a good distance, Ms. Barry. I I was looking at the Google Maps earlier. I I can try to pull up the GIS map to see what the GIS map shows, but I believe it is a decent distance at that point. But that's something, if we have to come back anyways, I can have that.
Yeah, I I'd like to have more specifics on that. Maybe a a map that you could show us that shows how close that is.
Do you also need to include drywells on the plan?
All right, and if there's any questions, comments?
Could I just do one quick question?
Go ahead, Scott.
Attorney Clower with the vernal pool in the back, are there any undue issues that are unaddressed, have been addressed with regards to drainage or any of that?
Not not that I'm aware of, sir, and I believe it was it was approved by Conservation, who did look at it for that for that purpose.
And I'm sorry, I may have missed any engineering comments or any environmental comments with regard to runoff towards that vernal pool, because I know it runs downhill from that property into.
Yeah, the engineering comment was simply that they would defer to Concom for for any sediment control practices.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, public comment, if there's any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon within the Zoom app, and we will elevate you and get to you shortly. And I am scrolling through the chat list as we speak. It looks like there's, uh, things regarding later on. Wendy Bustler, if she could be elevated, please. And I think if we could elevate Tom DeMello, too, he's the he's the applicant.
Tom DeMello is the applicant on the next hearing. I think he might have been confused as to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, okay, so he looks like, yep. Thank you, Attorney Clower, so pass on Tom DeMello for now. My apologies, Mr. DeMello. We'll get to you shortly with your application. It's a it's a similar one. But we do have Wendy Bustler, Ms. Bustler, if you could just state your address and whether whatever question, comment, or concern you may have.
Yes, I'm actually representing Oyster Pond Environmental Trust. We are the owners of the property behind this, where the where the vernal pool is located. I'm just chiming in to say, yes, of course, we're very concerned about the health of of the vernal pool, and I do know that Concom has already approved this, but we just would like to add our voice to that. We hope that there's something that can be done to make sure that's safeguarded. And in particular, to make sure that it does remain four bedrooms for this, the four bedroom sized septic system, that that isn't increased at any time.
Thank you, Ms. Bustler. And just to clarify who you're speaking on behalf of, are you the the?
I'm the executive director of Oyster Pond Environmental Trust, and actually, my last name is pronounced Bussler, but.
My my apologies. I'm I'm terrible with names.
So I have a question, just through. So I have a question just through the administrator, just so that if she knows, so Noreen, this is regarding Conservation, and I know that they did, you know, do the negative referral, but am I correct that when Conservation looked at this, since there's no drainage or issues in the plan, they're just looking that something is staying in the footprint, they're not actually looking at the use or the other changes?
So you're correct in that the Conservation Commission is more focused on the act of construction as opposed to the number of bedrooms. So they would not be looking at the same issues as the Board of Health.
So I know that CONCOM, um, did make sure there's a demarcated line for work, which would at least protect the pool and back. And that's why I think we need more information regarding drywells and drainage, because none of that was supplied previously. Um, and that is a concern, it is very close down there to that wetland.
Yeah, I, I think that should go before engineering as well to have the drywells put on the plan so that they understand where that roof runoff will be directed, and perhaps they can manipulate that so that instead of the runoff going to the rear of the property toward the vernal pool, that perhaps it can go to the side or front instead.
I, I would just like to chime in that that is a certified vernal pool too. So that gives it kind of a extra layer of protection.
Thank you for that. Mary?
Yeah, Wendy, I, I was wondering if you could just give us a little bit of background as to what, what that means, that different distinction.
Well, um, according to the state, when it gets certified, um, you have to, you have to make sure that you can prove it's, uh, an actual vernal pool, which means that there are um, animals that, that, um, depend on it for our, part of their life cycle. So we have been able to document that there are wood frog eggs there and salamander eggs. Um, and so that, that was enough to, to make it a certified vernal pool. Uh, this, so it's just, it's just a, a way to, um, one, to make sure that people are aware that it's a vernal pool that they, that it exists, because sometimes they will dry out over the season, over the year. Uh, so that, that's kind of, you know, that, it gets protected just like, um, any wetland area. But because it's certified, then people should be more aware of what's going on.
And also for a follow-up, if something were to happen because of runoff or something from this site that we're discussing, and it would have a negative effect on that vernal pool, would we be able to remediate that in any way to bring it back? Or is it gone for good?
Uh, I think that would be something CONCOM could answer better, but, um, I think it wouldn't completely destroy it or it would be gone, it, it's, the good thing is it's a pretty substantially si- substantially sized pool. But, uh, yeah, I think we definitely would have to be very careful of any kind of runoff in there, especially during the spring season when there are egg cases in there from, from wood frogs and salamanders, because that could damage the egg cases.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, anything else?
So I, just have one question, Mr. Clower, so on the CONCOM application I'm going through, it says that the application was for the removal and replacement of a garage only. So would CONCOM have any other concerns if they knew that there was additional living space added, you'd have to get piping and stuff in there, et cetera?
I, I don't believe so, to CONCOM typically from my, my experience takes a top-down of you, uh, top-down view, uh, approach to, to these uh, applications, so they're, they're really concerned with, uh, you know, kind of surface area setbacks, uh, impervious surfaces. They typically don't get into the number of bedrooms or the uses within the building.
Okay, uh, so, uh, if there's any, any other follow-up questions from the board? All right, uh, we are looking at a continuation based upon that information.
Uh, before, uh, there's any sort of motion, I just kind of want to confirm that I, I understand what it is that we're looking for um, and make a few comments, obviously, the, the applicants want to be good stewards and they have no intention of doing anything that's going to harm uh, the downstream vernal pool. And, uh, you know, really what we're doing is we're, we're not expanding the footprint, uh, happy to put drywells on, uh, but I don't think that, uh, the, the proposed use of it is any more necessarily dangerous than, than what exists today. They're, they're certainly happy to remove the existing bedroom has, has been proposed and make sure that it stays at four bedrooms. And then moving forward, uh, I, I understand that we're looking for, uh, Ms. Stockman's asked to, to make sure those two stairs are showed on the site plan. Ms. Barry has asked for the distance to the butter, and I, I did some quick, uh, sketching in the GIS and it's about thirty-five feet. Uh, but I'll, I'll see if I can confirm that for you, uh, with anything more substantial. The drywells are to be shown in the plan, uh, confirming the setback as to whether it's the overhang of the sidewall and adjusting accordingly if there is a discrepancy, and, uh, confirming that the egress is acceptable, uh, for Rod Palmer's purposes. Am I missing anything? Or is that, did that kind of?
The only other question I have, and I, and I don't even know how this would affect anything, it was probably an overhang anyways, but when you're adding the dormers to the right and left, since the garage is now going to be higher with the dormers, it does look like you're going to have to do a significant trimming of trees on the sideline, which are probably the neighbors' trees, but probably overhanging on this property at some point.
The neighbors actually agreed to that al- already.
So if you could include that, that, if you could include a note from them, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's been discussed with the neighbor and they're, they're, they're on board with it.
Again, the only other question I had was about the, um, what the purpose was of that slider since you have two full garage doors that go into the lower level of the building.
I think it's, I think it's just an aesthetic and an access point, um, rather than a door having a slider there.
Okay. So I think the, Attorney Clower, I think that's everything that we're looking for for next time, uh, I'll defer to Noreen in terms of date.
So our next meeting is February eleventh, I don't know if that will give you enough time, Mr. Clower, to get that information?
I, I suspect I can get the information, um, the two things I'm not sure about the timing of would be having a revision to the plan, that might not happen until, you know, early next week, and then, um, being able to get a meeting with Rod Palmer, uh, prior to that point.
All right, so, uh, perhaps February twenty-fifth would be a better choice then?
If, if I was, understanding that the board needs time to review these things, but a lot of this is confirmatory, what I don't want to do is end up getting information into you on Tuesday or Wednesday and then having it be an issue of not being submitted in time. Um, but given the nature of what we are providing, do you think it would be okay if that came in at that point? I just want to, you know, I'm trying to be realistic as to the timeframe of getting these things.
I, just a personal, just a personal comment, I think we should go with the later date only because we're having the same issue on multiple applications now. And my concern is if we adjust for one, we're going to have to adjust for all of them.
And, and I think the eleventh might be a busy night if I don't have the.
Yeah, there's a lot going on on the eleventh.
I have three matters in front of you on the eleventh.
You do have a forty B that night as well.
All right, so the twenty-fifth might be more realistic.
So then I think. Make that motion if, 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 if we're ready.
Think we are, go ahead, Ken.
Move to continue to, uh, uh, February twenty-fifth.
Second. All right, motion to continue to two twenty-five, that was made by Ken and seconded by Ed, roll call, vote, Ken?
Ken form an eye.
Ted?
Good evening, you're an I.
Bob?
Robert, you're an I.
Scott?
Excellent, you're an I.
And TJ, hurry, I, so Attorney Clower, we will see you back here on the February twenty-fifth.
Oh, you'll see me before then, but we'll be back here for this one then.
Well, for the, for this application, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, I would everyone like to take a quick five-minute break.
For me.
All right, see everyone in five. Our new public hearings, we have application seventy-three dash twenty, DeMello Feldman, fifteen Hawthorne Court in Falmouth.
So application number seventy-three dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws, we hereby notify that Thomas W. DeMello and Cynthia L. Feldman of Falmouth, Mass have applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C and two forty dash sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to construct in addition detached garage and remove front covered porch and replace with a raised covered deck on subject property known as fifteen Hawthorne Court, Falmouth, Mass. Uh, fire department has no issue with the project is drawn. Uh, from engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities, Hawthorne Court is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way, any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project was not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way. Four, we recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells or stormwater infiltration measures. Five, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per ninety-nine dash one, affixing of legible numbers required, time limit for compliance. Six, where the site slopes down to the public right of way, in a street opening or driveway permit from Engineering Division will not be required. We request that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the town right of way. Uh, since there'll be no engineering permit, we request the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document, which can be found on the Engineering Division's page of the town's website. Reference to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the Zoning Board of Appeals, who would be the permitting authority for this project. Uh, from Health Department, the property is on town sewer, the septic system shown has been abandoned per combined LP SSA permit number LP SSA two three nine, however, this permit is open and should be closed by contacting the wastewater division and building department. Uh, Conservation, Conservation Staff recommends the applicant files a request for determination of applicability with the Conservation Commission to seek permission for the above proposed activities within the flood zone. Uh, assessors, no comment. Planning, no comment. Water Department, the water service should be inspected and upgraded to one inch diameter if needed. Any detached structures must have a one-inch water service. Our applicant did, uh, submit a FEMA worksheet and also a lot coverage, uh, calculations. And, and that's all for now.
All right, thank you, Bob, and the voting members on this application will be the regular voting members, and once again, we have Attorney Clower.
Uh, good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name again is Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicant in this case, Thomas DeMello and Cynthia Fried Feldman, uh, the owners of fifteen Hawthorne Court. They are seeking permission to make alterations to the existing non-conforming dwelling on the property. It's located, uh, in the heart of Falmouth Heights on a lot of, uh, just shy of seventy-five hundred square feet in the residential sea zoning district. Presently, uh, there's a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a footprint of sixteen hundred and seventy-nine square feet. That dwelling is non-conforming to front yard setback, being nineteen point three feet where twenty-five was required, and the lot coverage by structures being twenty-two point six percent, where twenty is allowed by right and twenty, up to twenty-five by special permit. Uh, Mr. DeMello is actually a Falmouth native, uh, and has moved back here, uh, on a full-time basis. They've been in this house for a few years now, and have had a chance to kind of figure out what works and, and what doesn't, needs improvements. They're here tonight seeking approval for those desired changes. They're proposing a small addition at the rear of the home, alterations to the existing front porch and the addition of a detached garage. Presently, there's very little storage and, and no covered parking on the site. This will result in, uh, an increase to, to lot coverage by structure, a small increase, but it's to twenty-five percent, which is still allowed by special permit. And it's certainly in line with the neighborhood, which we'll discuss shortly. There's no impact on the front yard setback, the bedroom count will actually decrease from five to four. And, and these, this improvement will provide additional storage and parking, uh, moving cars further from the street, less clutter on the lot. This property, uh, is within the AE thirteen flood, flood zone district. So we did submit an appraisal and a FEMA cost breakdown worksheet. Uh, as reflected on that worksheet, the cost is less than fifty percent of the appraised value of the structure and therefore allowable under the FEMA guidelines. I do understand that, uh, at least one board member had a question as to whether or not the detached garage should be included on that worksheet, and the answer is no. Uh, you look at specific dwellings and actually included, uh, in the FEMA worksheet instructions is that, uh, uh, a cost not to be included is detached structures such as a garage. Uh, this does require a special permit under both two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. Two forty-three C allows for pre-existing non-conforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board is asked to consider two forty-two sixteen and whether the alteration uh, creates new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Uh, in this case, no new non-conformity will be created. Uh, the non-conforming front yard setback will not be affected, and the lot coverage by structure, the slightly increased, um, won't be non-conforming, it's allowed by special permit. Uh, however, that does also require that special permit under two forty-sixty-nine E, which allows for lot coverage exceeding twenty percent uh, in the residential sea zoning district. That section of the bylaw asks, uh, the board to consider the high size and height of the structure and related, relation to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Here, there's no impact of views and vistas from public ways, there's no change to shadow, uh, as there's no change to the ridge height of the building. Uh, there's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments, it is on the Little Pond Sewer District, and in fact, the number of bedrooms is decreasing. As to the size and height of the structures, we did submit that lot comparison worksheet, uh, which looked at forty-five properties within a three-hundred-foot radius of this. Of those forty-five properties, nineteen have larger footprints and twenty-eight have larger gross floor areas. This building as proposed is incredibly co- close to the average footprint and smaller than the average for gross floor area. I also think it's worth noting that the average lot coverage by structure to these properties is twenty-four and a half percent. And until two thousand and two, uh, the allowed lot coverage by structure was thirty-five percent in this district. Project, this project as proposed represents, uh, a lot of improvements for the applicants. There's currently limited storage and no garage, uh, there's only a small gravel parking area near the street. This proposed garage will, will improve the property, uh, both aesthetically and functionally, uh, to say nothing of the improvements to the interior of the structure for them. Uh, this project is not substantially more detrimental than, than what exists, it won't create any new dimensional non-conformities. It doesn't impact views and vistas, and it does reasonably conform to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. It also meets the requirements of two forty-two sixteen. Uh, I do want to note that this was approved by Conservation Commission last week. Um, I'm happy to submit a, a copy of that, uh, approval, I was surprised it wasn't in there already, but we, that has been approved. Uh, for these reasons, I, I believe that the board can and should grant a special permit for this application. And I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower, we will turn it to board questions, uh. Ken, do you want to get us started?
You know, me making me go first every time, um, I do.
I do not have any questions at this time.
Ed, anything? Okay, James?
No questions, thank you.
All right, Mary?
No questions.
Very good, Bob?
Lots of questions.
All right.
Attorney Clower, what is the eight-foot-wide easements that's shown on the plan?
So, there was an easement granted back in nineteen-seventy-five because there was a cesspool that straddled the lot line. And that easement allowed, it was a non-exclusive easement that allowed the owner of the abutting property to come onto that eight-foot-wide easement from time to time to make improvements or repairs to the cesspool. That cesspool has also been abandoned.
So, is the easement then considered abandoned or is it still active?
I think practically it's probably abandoned. It's not exclusive. It just allows them the right to come onto that stretch of property from time to time.
So, you mentioned that on the FEMA regulations, they do not include the garage because it's a detached structure. Is that the reason you've made this a detached structure? Because it only has a foot, seven inches from the dwelling as a distance?
No, I don't think it is the reason. That was, that was the plan long before the FEMA worksheet was done. I just don't think there's any practical reason to attach it to that sort of elevated deck.
So, can you tell me how somebody accesses a one-foot, seven-inch space for the length of the garage? For building or maintenance?
There is storage underneath that deck.
If you look at the plan, the side of the garage is one foot, seven inches from the side of the length of the deck, not from the access to storage on the deck?
So, there is storage underneath that deck, yes.
Which is enclosed. My question is, how do you access the one-foot, seven-inch space in between the deck and the garage?
You know, I'm not quite sure. That was the, that was the plan but long before it came to me.
So, do you have any idea how somebody would even build with a dimension that close to another structure?
I don't, I don't think that there'd be much issue from a construction standpoint because they're going to be building.
So, how do they, how do they put the sidewall on the garage that's against the deck in a one-foot, seven-inch span?
They would be working, they could be working from the inside before the roof goes on.
So, they would, so they would, they would work from inside the garage. How do they get the shingles on the exterior? Or clapboards or nails or? It just, it just seems to appear that there really is no common sense reason you would make something that close to another structure without attaching it, except for the fact that if you attach it, you now have to figure it into your FEMA worksheet because it's now part of the main structure.
I don't think that's the rationale there, but even if it was, I don't think that's prohibitive. The garage is set eleven, it looks like it's set eleven-point-two feet from the property line. So, there's not that much further it could go.
I understand, that's, that's my point. I think if they want to put one in, they need to connect it or remove a portion of that deck space to move it over if they want it bigger. But it just, it, it just doesn't seem based in reality that you would put anything, a detached structure with less than two feet space along the whole length of the structure where nobody could access it. There's no way to access that. We've had, we've had situations where a development wanted to put in a house and some parts of the house were three feet within a lot line and we had no way that they could show us that they could access it. I just, I just think, I just think citing it that close with a span just, it just seems unreasonable. Regarding you mentioned, so you mentioned something about a five-bedroom. So, is that, it used to be a five-bedroom?
It's currently a five-bedroom house. There was, there was a topographical error on my application. If you look at the existing plans, it reflects five bedrooms.
Okay, and it will, is it, and it'll be remaining five or going to?
No, it's going down to four.
So, is that because it wasn't certified under the LP SSA for the four-bedroom limit?
No, they're just combining two of the bedrooms on the, on the, on the second floor in order to create a larger master. It's assessed as a five-bedroom house. And there's, there's.
So, on the LP SSA, when they were putting the system in, they required all homeowners that had more than four bedrooms to show some kind of certification that they were four-bedroom, that they were larger than four bedrooms in order to carry the system. I dealt with this on some other properties. So, my question is, if they're going to four bedrooms, then are they giving up the, the right of the original five?
Yes, I mean, they're, they're going down to four bedrooms. And then they're combining two bedrooms on the second floor in order to, to make a master suite.
Right, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Bob. Scott?
Yeah, good evening. The, the septic system that's in, I am correct, it's a, it's a standard septic system, right?
It's been abandoned.
So, they're not, they're on sewer now?
Yes.
So, the plans are incorrect where it says approximate location of existing septic system on the?
That's where the septic system was, I would presume, but it's been abandoned. And that's pursuant to the LP SSA permit. It shows that it's being abandoned and that was approved as abandoned.
So, the, so the plans are incorrect?
I think the plans probably reflect where the septic system was prior to the abandonment.
Location of existing septic, okay. You say so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just as a notation, that's, that's where the reference comes in, that they still have an open permit from their original sewer connection. They never actually closed out the permit showing the filling in of the old system or what they need. So, that's why that would have to be closed out in advance.
It has been closed.
Can you just send us something then that shows that the permits?
I can actually, I can actually show you right now as well. I have it, if I can, share my screen for one moment. I'd be happy to submit this to the file, but I did scan it this evening. And this is the LP SSA combined permit, which is reflected as being closed and does show everything is being passed. But I can submit a copy of that to the file as well.
If you could, I think I'd appreciate it, Attorney Clower.
So, that's the, that's the close for the building department, correct?
Yes.
But that's not the close for the wastewater department, they're separate.
I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of the wastewater permit. I've only ever dealt with the building permits for these.
Yeah, so on the wastewater permits, what you just have now on the building department, you now have to submit to Amy Lowell so they can actually close out the actual connection.
Well, I can speak with the contractor to make sure that's addressed.
Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
All right. My issues have already been addressed through board questions. We'll turn it to.
Actually, Bob raised a really intriguing point there about the FEMA threshold. I wonder if, if Attorney Clower could just walk us through what happens if you come, if it is attached?
It would need to be calculated into the FEMA worksheet, but they're not proposing to attach it. I was, I've been told by the contractor that the existing stairs are being removed, leaving plenty of room to build the garage before finishing the deck. I don't typically ask questions about construction methodology as part of this process. It's, I trust that people who are doing these things are going to do it, you know, know what they're doing. But, you know, I'm being told that it's not going to be an issue for them and it is a detached garage.
So, just a comment on that, on the removal of the stairs. Once they do remove the stairs, that's not where this garage is mainly against the structure. The structure that it's against is the actual deck, the enclosed decking itself. It's not like a general raised decks, it's completely enclosed. So, that side of that deck runs pretty much the length of the side of the garage. That is staying intact, that's not being changed.
So, there, there is, there's an existing stairwell along the southern side of the stair, deck that is coming, being removed.
Yeah, it will, but that's, but when you, when you look at the garage, even when they move that, that's, that's not, it's not actually solving any problem with the one-point-seven separation from the garage in the main building. You know, I love to hear from the contractor how they would plan on building that and doing any work within a one-point-seven-foot span that goes eleven feet. I don't even know how you'd access it because you'd have to take the deck off to access it. And then that's being removed. So, it just, that's what I'm saying. It, it, there's no common sense that I can think of of why you would cite something that close in not just attaching it. If you attach it, you get rid of all the issues with the maintenance. It's actually attached as part of the building. If you don't attach it and leave that span, you cause all sorts of problems between not only construction, any kind of future maintenance, any changes. And I, and I understand regarding the FEMA worksheet. You know, when I looked over the FEMA worksheet regulations, if I had to guess, the cost, if that's attached, you're not going to meet the fifty percent threshold. You don't have enough of a cost buffer.
Right now, it's a two-fifty-four, right? And that, that's what I was trying to understand. Is the two-fifty-four for the improvements to the house not including the garage?
Yes.
And then, you know, the threshold is two-fifty-seven apparently.
Yeah, and then if you have the garage, you, you wouldn't be able to do it. You, you then would have to bring the property into compliance.
Yeah, but what is the legalities behind that? Is it something that they're not allowed to do even though it's problematic?
No.
Is it a loophole hypothetically that someone is jumping through to be able to not have to, to do that?
Well, I think it comes down to, I mean, the building department can decide wherever you want to place something. But, you know, when something's going for a special permit, other things apply.
Bob, what, if it's, if it's legal and it's, and it's a loophole, what is our authority other than?
Well, maybe, well, maybe we should.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we should find out what is allowed. I, I mean, give me an example of any structure in town where they're giving permits for something to be built within a foot of an entire sidewall that can't be accessed.
Well, maybe I'm not understanding. Somebody explain to me why that makes a difference here. I mean, I just don't know what, what the line of questioning is regarding.
Okay, so how could you build it? How could you maintain it? Let's say you have a problem with the sidewall.
But that isn't our problem. Approved, if it's approved by building, that's their problem.
Yeah, but if you're dealing in a neighborhood and now you got a new maintenance issue and now you're looking at a butters and there's another problem. If they could give me.
Our purview, then I'm on board with that.
Yeah, so my, I guess my argument is, I would love to hear from the builder what his decision was to build anything that close. Has he ever done that anywhere else in this town? Or was it to get around the FEMA threshold? And the only thing that seems to make sense is they're doing this because with the fifty percent in the appraisal they got and the work they want to do in the main house, they can't attach the garage without having to upgrade the entire property to meet the flood regulations.
Well, therein lies the question.
Yeah.
That's, that's where we, we went all that way to get to that.
Yeah.
That's the question.
Right, and I think that what I worry about is it gets approved and then in construction somehow it becomes an attached garage and they come to you afterwards and say, oh, we had to attach it.
So, as far as part of this record and testimony, then I, I believe we should ask the question in its totality to protect yourself against that.
Yeah, right, well, that's what I was driving at when I was saying, what is the, asking Bob to give, Bob, sorry, Kevin.
Sorry, Bob.
Kevin, I, anyway, I was asked, I was wondering, you know, if, if, if you could just run down, because I don't see a cost estimate here for the garage construction.
Well, it's not included in that, Mr. Foreman.
Right.
So, in looking at the plan, I'd have, I'd have to confirm with my, with my client, but I think that the garage, if it would assuage everyone's concerns, be shifted about one-point-two feet further to the south. That would give you almost three feet there as a gap.
Well, I mean, the thing is, we just want to be sure, I think we want to be sure that we don't run into a situation where, you know, somewhere after the zoning approval, you come back for administrative approval to a change that.
Well, sure.
Because it was impractical to construct the way you proposed. And now suddenly, where, what do you do? Because you're, you know, the FEMA regs are, I don't know, what does Noreen think?
I am not an expert. I have never built a garage, so I don't know that I can be particularly helpful. But I suppose the ability to be able to maintain something or not is probably not something that the board needs. You're concerned about it, but I don't know that that can impact your voting per se.
I think our concern is with the FEMA regs and what happens if in the process of construction, they, they exceed the, the regulation in terms of construction cost because they have to attach the structure? What's the recourse?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Clower, do you have, do you have any examples in the entire town that you know of where something has currently or recently been constructed this close in proximity?
That's not an entirely fair question. I haven't, I hadn't thought about it before this hearing.
Well, maybe you can come up with some ideas before the next one.
Well, I prefer not to have another hearing. You know, I think that the, the contractor is going to have a responsibility to build this. We are, we know it cannot be attached. We're, we're getting a special permit. We know that if we were to come back for an administrative approval to attach it, it wouldn't be approved, especially if it was done after the fact. I think that to the extent the board is truly concerned about it, the garage could be shifted to the south another foot or so, which would provide more space if that is truly a concern. But I think Ms. Stockman's probably correct that, that the ongoing upkeep or even the construction methodology isn't something the board, within the board's purview. That said, we're happy to try to address it if shifting it, if my client's willing and if shifting it would, would solve that. But if that's still not going to be able to scratch that itch, so to speak, I think that, you know, the, there's, there's a conflict there between what the board should be considering and, and the question being posed.
For sure, you could, you could shift it. You've got, it's eleven-point-two at the closest, ten is the standard.
Yeah, so I think you can go about a foot, you know, one-point-two.
That might make Bob happy, it might make me more comfortable too. The other issue is, if you, if you attach it, now you're going to exceed.
Well, we're not, we're not attaching it.
I understand. If you, if you did, you would exceed the lot, unless you, I guess you wouldn't exceed the lot coverage, but.
No.
If you, if you just moved it to the north. But yeah, moving it a little to the south, you might not regret that, you know?
So, the reason for the distance being so close is that you want to maximize the deck area? Is that what that is, without touching the garage?
Quite honestly, sir, I wasn't part of the, the design process. I don't quite know what the rationale was. I, I think that there was only eleven feet there, so they probably wanted to give themselves some room on the southern side. But if the board is concerned with the distance there, I think they'll have to bring it further south and squeeze, squeeze that to the ten-foot.
Would it be a possibility when this is, this gets continued to speak to somebody to that, that's in the design team or the engineering part of this?
Yeah, I mean, the deck, the deck is remaining the same size as it is presently. So, I, I don't, I don't think that they were trying to maximize the, the deck necessarily, other than keeping it as it is.
I mean, but you clearly said you don't know why they did it.
I don't, but I'm just saying that the deck is remaining the same size.
I'm just asking, is there a representative from the build team that could answer that question at, at another hearing?
I'm sure there is.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, I think even six inches would help you.
And I, I agree. I think shifting the, shifting the proposed garage would definitely help. And just generally speaking, I know the board typically does not get into requirements about how, how something's built. But, you know, this isn't the first application that we've dealt with where the FEMA regs pop up and it becomes an ancillary issue of, you know, of the money requirement up against that fifty percent. you know, of the money requirement up against that 50% and I, I won't cite any other previous cases, but uh, we've definitely seen that before where construction methodology definitely comes into play.
But the board has also before made a decision on a structure because they didn't feel it had enough of a setback for construction or maintenance.
Oh, I agree with Bob.
Yeah, but so, so it just, just, you know, it has come up before.
Right, we, we generally stay away from it, but you know, every application is different. It does pop up.
Listen, I would love to know from the building department or the building commissioner, what is the minimum distance you can do a detached structure? That meets code. That meets state code, local code and OSHA regulations. I don't, I just don't know how you do it.
Sure. I think, uh, Ed, Ed has a question or at least a comment. Ed? You're muted. You, you'll have to unmute yourself.
If you look, if you look at, you gotta be now.
We got you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
You look at the drawing, eight, two dot zero, it shows the roof coming over and the edge of the roof is touching the, almost touching the deck.
Sounds like it. That's the overhang. Yeah. Hey, Mary, did you have anything? I wasn't sure if you, no? Okay. Anything else from the board? All right, uh, I don't, I don't think we did public comment, did we? I don't think so. All right, anyone out there, uh, has any question, comment or concern regarding this project, uh, go ahead and hit the raised hand icon and we will get to you shortly. Tom Demello, I think this is, this is the best, you're in all right? Okay, if we, if we could get him elevated, please. And again, if anyone else, anyone else out there has a question, comment or concern, go ahead and click the raised hand and we'll get to you shortly. Uh, Mr. Demello, are you with us?
I am. Hi, how are you?
Good. How about yourself?
Well, I'm sitting in a hotel bed, a hospital bed rather, so, sorry for the really cute gown I'm wearing. I thought I'd make a style statement for the meeting tonight.
I hope everything's all right with you.
Yeah, I'll be all right. Uh, I thought I'd make a couple of comments, um, that I think would be appropriate. Uh, first of all, this is the first, uh, conversation of any sort that related to the placement of that garage and the FEMA issue. Um, we had contemplated a few different places for the garage. Ultimately, we put it where it is because of setback issues relative to that side of the yard. And we thought it would be appropriate to have the right, we, we knew we needed to have the right setback and the back, right rear, uh, side of the home, uh, the property rather. And that's why we put it there. We put it a ways, a little ways off of, uh, the deck itself because we didn't want the overhang to be something you'd knock into when you were trying to enjoy the deck. And as was stated before, the idea was to keep the deck, uh, the same size it is today. Um, that, you know, we, we have been using it that way. We know we can get our furniture out there and, and how we use it and then that made the most sense to us. So, uh, those are the reasons why we did it. Um, if, if there is space to move it a little closer to the setback line and gain a little extra space, that seems like, uh, a pretty easy solution, uh, to what you're talking about. But that's the, that's the sort of beginning and end of, you know, how we came up with, uh, putting it there. Uh, and why, and you know, we've certainly consulted with the builders all the way through, reviewed all the plans. Uh, and this was something I've talked about a fair amount, was always going to be a detached garage. And, uh, it ended up being, as it turned out, the first plans we had, had that setback line being a little, uh, further away from the house. But after we got the engineers, and it turned out to be, and it was kind of an after the fact, well, we got to move it over a little bit, uh, to get the, to get the garage, uh, within compliance. And so that's, that's how we've arrived to where we are today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Demello. Uh, any questions for Mr. Demello from the board?
I just want to say this is the first time I've ever seen somebody zoom in from a hospital bed. I, I appreciate his dedication.
I do too. That's a first. All right. Anything else from the board?
Uh, just a question on the setback again, like on the one in Oyster Pond, uh, we have to make sure the setback is to the overhang and not to the side of the building. It appears it's to the side of the building.
Okay. Uh, so I think, uh, obviously we're looking at a continuance, but I, I gathering from the board that they're looking for the detached garage to be set back a little closer to the, what side is it?
I think it's the south.
Is that the south?
Yeah. I, I don't think that's a bad outcome at all. I, I think it's, it, it's something that might behoove everyone in, in the long run. So, you know, I, as Tom mentioned, where I think, I think that's an easy thing for us to fix.
They need to come up with a documentation to close out that sewer issue too, right?
Yeah, but I'd like to get some information from the building department on what's allowed for your closest setback for it from a detached structure that's newly constructed.
Is that something you want us to get, Mr. Yan, or is that something you'd be looking?
No, we can, we can, we can do that through the administrator can request the info. Cause we're going to need to see copies of anywhere, whatever the code is or what the requirements are.
So typically with a garage, you're within, I believe it's five feet. There are additional fire code requirements, which would be, you know, some additional fire stoppage material, but, um, I can certainly check with the building commissioner to see what else there might be.
Would that, would that also be identified specifically in the special permit? As part of the construction, if, if those are added requirements because of the, the distance to it?
So no, uh, materials would be strictly through the building department?
Cause in this case, like Ed said, the overhang of the roof on the deck side pretty much touches the post. I think it's in within an inch.
We'll have a little more space now.
Yeah. So I mean, I think the, the typical intent is that, you know, when you have a garage in close proximity to your dwelling, but not attached, or even if it is attached, um, you know, there's a desire to have additional like firewall protection there so that, you know, should something ignite in the garage, that it wouldn't transfer to the house or that there's something that slows that process down. So that would just be a materials issue.
I guess the other question would there be drywells on the plan? Because in this case, if you're going to add gutters to that roof, then that's going to actually have a problem with the deck.
All right. Anything else?
I guess the only other thing would be just, just with Amy Lowell with wastewater. Because I've dealt with this issue with original five bedroom somes before. Just get something from her so she understands that they are going to register this as a four bedroom, not a five. Cause four is the maximum allowed on the LPSSA.
Just for transparency sake, there is a utility room on, on the bottom floor, uh, but it does not qualify as a bedroom. It's less than 70 square feet.
Okay. All right, Noreen, what's, uh, what's the next best date that we have?
Um, let's see, I think you'll be looking to add to February 25.
All right. Would anyone like to make that motion?
So motion to continue to February 25?
All right, motion to continue to February 25th made by Bob and, uh, seconded by, I'll give that to Ed. Roll call, vote, Ed?
Ed Van Kier and I.
Ken?
And Foreman and I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan I.
Scott?
Scott Slinski.
And TJ Hurry, I. So this hearing is continued to February 25th. Turning, Mr. Demello, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Best of luck and best of health to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, up next we have application 74 dash 20 McGordy, 10 Cypress Street in T-Ticket.
So application number 74 dash 20, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby notified that Michael J. McGordy of Branch Tree, Mass has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a modification of special permit number 66 dash 19 pursuant to sections 240 dash 3C and 240 dash 69E of the Code of FALMA to modify previously approved plans. The subject property is 10 Cypress Street, T-Ticket, Mass. For referrals, engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Cypress Street is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project was not direct any stormwater runoff to public property. A butters a public right of way. Drywells are included on the revised plans. And we recommend that condition number three of the approval remain in effect. Fire department has no issues as drawn. Planning has no comment. And, uh, condition number three that they're referring to from our previous permit said abide by town engineering requirements. Where no stormwater may be directed off premises, all portions of the roof shall be connected to installed drywells.
All right. And that's it, Bob?
Yeah.
All right. And I, he did have his hand raised. I think it was just Michael. There it is. If we could elevate Michael, please. I think that's Michael McGordy. All right, and you're currently muted, so you'll have to unmute yourself. Okay, you with us?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right. There you are. Welcome.
Excuse me. Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael McGordy. I'm the owner of the property at 10 Cypress Street. Uh, I was approved for a plan, um, back in November of, uh, 2019. And I had to, uh, request a FEMA change for a flood map. They had to move the line. It kind of came through the house that uh, would have made me, uh, lose my, uh, opportunity to put a full foundation. We got that corrected. It took 11 months. And in the process, we came up with a better plan. Uh, when I left the meeting, uh, back in, uh, 2019, uh, one of the members had mentioned that the house was somewhat boxy and, uh, that individual was absolutely correct and, uh, we took a closer look at it. We came up with a new plan. The plan I have is the same footprint. I've just rotated it 90 degrees. It fits on a lot better. Um, and it's not as intrusive or as boxy. It's more contemporary. Uh, originally we had it as a gambrel. And, uh, basically we've covered all the, uh, issues that, uh, concerned the board. The last time we had the drywells, uh, we're addressing any water runoff. Uh, since, uh, uh, my original application, uh, we have completed the roadway. Uh, we do have an extensive drainage system in the roadway that, uh, this will not affect whatsoever. We're going to handle all that on the, on this property itself. The bedrooms remain the same. Um, it's just, uh, the house, uh, design is, uh, is, is much nicer and, uh, basically, uh, that's, that's really all I have.
All right. Okay, we'll turn it to, uh, board questions if you're all set. Ed, anything?
No, no questions.
Okay, Ken?
I'm good at the moment.
All right, James?
Oh, thank you.
Mary?
I have no comments.
Hey, Bob?
Just thank you for adjusting the boxiness.
It was you. Yes, sir. You were absolutely correct.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it.
Okay.
Happy.
Scott? Scott?
Well, thank you.
All right. And, uh, Mr. McGordy, as, uh, my memory recalls, I believe you have family members on the road, either side of you?
I do, and all the way up the street. Yes, sir.
All right, so fair to say there's, uh, no opposition. Or who knows?
Not, not anymore. Thank you.
Very good. All right, uh, that does it for me. Any other follow up questions from the board? All right, seeing none, we'll turn it to, uh, public comment. Any questions, comments or concerns from members of the public? Go ahead and click the raised hand icon in the Zoom app and we will get to you in a minute if there is anyone out there. Okay, not seeing anyone. Back to the board. Any, any follow up questions? All right. How would the board like to proceed?
So motion to close.
Okay, motion to close made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call, vote, Ed?
Ed Van Kier and I.
Ken? Nope, you're muted, Ken. Sorry.
And Foreman and I.
Thank you, Ken. Bob?
Robert Dugan I.
Scott?
Scott Slinski.
And TJ Hurry, I. So the hearing is closed. How would the board like to proceed with the project?
So motion approve, uh, modification with conditions.
Very good. Is there a second? Second by Ed. Thank you, Ed. All right, Bob, findings?
Uh, 240 dash 3C, 240 dash 69E, 240 dash 216. Uh, applicant had to modify placement, uh, due to the flood plain map so that he would not lose a full basement. App can also decided to make some architectural changes. I don't think we have to put into adjust the boxiness, but, we need to, uh, the, uh, engineering has asked that we, uh, make sure that condition three is included. Uh, we'll have to refer, we'll have to, Noreen, refer to any of the new setbacks and with the new configuration based on the plan. And there's no other changes regarding configuration inside the house.
All right, anything else for findings?
I guess we could just put in there that the roadway is also in. I think that's good to know now that the road is in.
Oh, that's right. They paved it. Yep. Okay, conditions?
I guess per the revised plans, uh, the engineering requirement of number three, uh, we should adjust the drywall requirement to what we do now where they have to inspect while they're open for installation.
Okay.
And then just, I guess, per plans.
Pretty good. Anything else? All right, so that was a motion, uh, to approve with conditions and modification of the previously proved project made by Bob, uh, seconded by Ed. Roll call, vote once again. Ed?
Ed Van Kier and I.
Ken?
And Foreman and I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott, let's go.
And TJ Hari, I. So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. McGordy, good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that takes care of our public hearings. Onto our open meeting items. We first have voting the minutes of January 7th and January 21st, I think. Norine, tabling 21st?
Tabling 21, thank you.
Okay. So we have the minutes for January 7th. Anyone like to make a motion on that?
Did I see that?
Did you see the minutes, Ed?
I don't remember. Did Norine, did I see them?
Um, I hope so. I saw.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I don't remember.
The same way, Ed, about my income taxes.
All right, so Ed, are you making that motion, or would you rather someone else?
I'll make a motion that I saw him and make a motion to accept.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that he saw them too.
Very good. All right. Motion to approve the minutes for January 7th made by Ed, seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
James?
James Morris, I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott, let's go. Just froze up.
Oh, TJ, you're frozen.
I believe. Is the hearing closed?
No, yeah.
Still got a vote. We didn't hear. It wasn't on camera.
Oh. And my internet connection is unstable. Okay. Did we close the hearing? Or did we leave it open?
Oh, you mean on?
Oh, Acapescot. Acapescot.
Oh, sorry. Have my, has, yeah, has my internet been that bad?
Everybody voted on the last one, but you, you cut out before you made the vote and announced the vote.
Oh, okay, on the minutes?
Yes, you do another roll call on the minutes.
Or another whole roll call? Okay.
Well, since you were disconnected, just quick.
Okay.
He's either got to say aye and he can complete it, we can move on, right?
Yeah, did, did, did everyone except for myself? Okay, so TJ Hari, I. Minutes for January 7th get passed unanimously. All right, so up next, we have reviewing the draft decision with possible vote on application 59-20 Kelly, 165 Acapescot Road in East Falmouth. So my question was if we closed the hearing.
So it's my understanding that we did close the hearing for draft decision. And we received the draft decision. But I will not approve based on this draft decision, so I am willing to reopen the hearing.
So I think you had originally voted to close the hearing, and then you changed that to request the draft. So you essentially did not, as far as I can tell in my notes, you did not officially close. But though you did ask for a draft to discuss.
Okay, so didn't we close the hearing and then go to the draft? If, I just want to make sure because.
Right, so you originally voted to close, and then you changed that, and you asked to change that vote, and then you voted separately to request the administrative approval and the review of the draft. So you essentially undid your vote to close.
So then we, so we can discuss the project in general then?
That's my understanding.
All right, so the hearing, so the hearing's still open. That's basically my.
It sounds like.
Who are the voting members on this again?
The regular members?
Yes.
Would it be easier just to have another vote to reopen the hearing, just in case? I'd feel better about it.
So then I'll make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Sorry, what's that, Scott, before we take?
Is the applicant in the audience, does he know that it's reopened or it stayed open?
He's, he's here, and I just wanted clarification if it was closed and no more testimony could be taken.
Right.
Or if it was open and we can chat about the, chat about the draft.
Right.
All right, sorry, Bob, you were making that motion?
So I'd make a motion to reopen.
I'll second it.
Seconding it. Motion to reopen the hearing made by Bob, seconded by Scott. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
And Forman, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott, let's go.
And TJ Hari, I. So the motion passes unanimously. The hearing is reopened. And if we could elevate Jim, please. All right, and so this is for discussion purposes. Reviewing the, all you'll have to do is unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We're, yes, but we're getting terrible feedback. If you have multiple devices open, you'll have to turn them off or mute.
Okay, how about that? Can you hear me now?
Loud and clear now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the confusion. I've been having difficulties here with my hardware.
No worries.
I don't know if I can get the camera. Oh, there I am. Okay. Okay. All right, when we last met, I came to answer six questions that you had forwarded by Ashley DeMello that involved ridge height setbacks, email from Scott McGann, copy of Title V inspection, revised floor plan showing removal of the stairs and access through the garage into living space and pumping records. And you, unless you have any questions about that, you seem to have been satisfied with that. What I did not know at the time was that I was required to come back before you for the approval of the changes that were made. They were made strictly through the inspectional services and not forwarded to you. I'll, I'll take the hit for that. Since then, Norine Stockman graciously made the administrative approvals on those, and I have filed those with the Registry of Deeds in Barnstable County. And I've also submitted a deed restriction that I believe is still in the hands of the city council. Not sure what the status of that is.
Mr. Chairman, how can he file if there's no decision?
So I think Norine could shed some light on that. Is he referring to the?
Sure, so following your last meeting, you requested an administrative approval for the interior changes that had been made, and they had been permitted through the building department. So to facilitate this process, I did provide Mr. Kelly with an administrative approval for those interior changes that were made with the permission of the building department. So that's. Being filed.
Did Mr. Kelly submit a request for you listing what the changes were?
So the board, I believe, listed the items that they wanted on the administrative approval.
But it was still part of this appeal?
Right.
I don't understand then.
So what did he, so what did he submit with the administrative approval? Did he submit a new plan? Did he submit what the exact changes were?
Sure, so we, he provided a copy of the plans that the building department had approved with the changes on. So that included the stairway. I believe it was the basement under the breezeway. So he submitted the plant, the same plans to us that the building department had approved.
So did that, so did that include just the basement under the breezeway and a removal of a stair? Or did it also include removal of the doorway into the breezeway and the addition of the doorway from the basement into the new garage space?
I don't believe that I referenced specifically a doorway.
In the, this, the sketch that was provided, the sketch that was provided in the file, it looked like some kind of an elevation that had a building stamp on it, but it didn't list where the sketch was from or who did it. Do we have any reference what they relied on for the sketch? Since there's no scale, there's no, there's just dimensions added to it? I guess my concern is that if somebody checked in, checked back into this and saw that there was administrative approval, they were then asked to see the documentation that related to the approval. And if we don't have the documentation to relate to the approval, I don't want that to be a problem. In the meantime, looking at the plan, there is a, there's an AC pad out there. They've added a outdoor shower connection into the back of the garage that doesn't appear on the plan. The, I know you made reference to the stairway, but you'd have to make reference to the doorway disappearing. You'd have to make reference to a doorway being put into the garage flowing into the basement. I know that Mr. Kelly submitted some photos today. One of them showed the doorway, so at least we can understand that you walked directly into the garage now, directly into the basement. There's no need of stairs. But it appeared that area looked like it had some finished space to it. I don't know if it's, it definitely had, you know, finished ceiling and indirect lighting, and I didn't know if that was any kind of issue that needed to be referenced somewhere because we were told that everything in the basement was unfinished.
If I could speak to that?
Yep, go ahead.
That, that area that you're referring to is a 10 by 10 basement under the mudroom, under the breezeway that became my shed storage. I, Norine asked me for pictures of the walkthrough. I could have gone a little bit further to the left and showed you lawnmower, shelving for all my shed equipment, snow blower, hoses, ladders, and things like that.
I guess what concerns me, Kelly, is when we have some of these plans that are done, like if an addition was added, we don't even have anything that shows elevations or doorways. So Mike, I noticed you, I'm sure you've got a metal insulated door in the garage. We can see that there's another door that closes off from the next part of the basement. We don't have anything about the pad on the AC. We don't have anything on the, where the shower is being connected out back. And one thing that concerned me on top of that was you sent photos of the, the landing that was removed to show that it was removed. And when I went back to the house today, the landing was in place. And I don't know why somebody would submit a photo showing that it has been completely detached from the house. And then when somebody goes to the house, it's put right back in place and appears it's used.
Actually, that was, that was too close to the, the neighbor's lot line, so I did move that back today. Or, no, I guess it was yesterday. I'm sorry, it was yesterday I moved that back.
I guess the whole point is, that's the whole purpose of this whole hearing. We discussed in detail that landing. You went out of your way to show pictures that you cut it and removed it from the house. And then I go by just to assume, great, it's off the house. And I walk there and it's back and it's in use. It doesn't fill me with any confidence whatsoever on any other part of this plan. That's what I noticed. But that's what I noticed is a shower connection. And then I noticed there's an AC pad. Now, I'm there at the end of the day. What else, what other changes aren't in our plan?
The shower connection, I spoke to Gary Street about that. And he said, as long as it's not surrounded by an enclosure, he asked me what it was used for. Because I went there seeking permission to, a permit to add that in there. And he said, it's not required unless I surround that with an enclosure.
If you, if, if, if you knew you had issues before where you had approved the change with one department, and you know that your entire project has to be improved here, why wouldn't you have just said to us, I've made a couple other changes, let's handle it now? Instead of me having to go out there and say, why did you remove it and show me documentation? This is what really gets to me. You sent documentation. If I did not go out there today, I would have assumed you had complied with the removal of that landing. I would have made a decision based on the fact that you showed me you complied. And you just stated yourself, you decided to put it back.
I didn't decide to put it back. I decided to get away from the neighbor's property line. I can take you out there right now. It's removed right now.
I don't want to go out there right now. I went out there this afternoon.
I can take you out there with, with the laptop and show you.
To be honest, right now, I'm just annoyed by it. We take time out of our schedules to do projects like this and review them to the best of our ability. I take my personal time to run out there just to say, great, it's all done. And I show up and you're using it right where it was before, but you've sent us documentation saying I have removed it. It's no longer there. It's, that's not acceptable. And when I take that, and now I look at seven or eight other things on the plan that also don't match anything, it questions the plan. Right now, I am not in favor of this plan whatsoever. I think that the process is wrong. I think you should have made a formal request for the administrative approval to the administrator. And that request should have shown a full set of plans current to what that house is. Elevations current to what that house is, showing the removal of the pedestal, showing the change of where you're going to put in the shower, showing the change of where you're going to put the compressors in the AC. Then the administrator would have had something to back up any changes that were done in the plan because it wasn't done before. And quite, and quite honestly, we went out of our way to give you that chance. We could have just said, end of hearing, withdrawn, come back in two years. But there was something that the building department gave you a permit for, so we gave you the chance to do it. And when I asked the administrator about what you submitted, I'm not satisfied with what you submitted. And, and I'm upset that you gave photo documentations which quite frankly lied to the board. You make a false claim to the board and say this was done, and then you expect me to believe you that you're not going to do this on some part of the house, so you're not going to do something else. I have absolutely no faith in the project whatsoever. I, 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 I think we should just make you reapply. Make you reapply for the administrative and go through the whole process all over again. I, I have no confidence in this plan. I have no confidence in the process we've done so far. I know the administrator was trying to help you out, but even that administrative approval isn't good. The administrative approval doesn't include the other changes on the plan. Your application to us for this plan of finishing the upstairs does not show any of that information. So I'm, I'm not satisfied. I, I, I'm disgusted by how this whole process has gone.
Well, if you could give me a minute to speak to that. Well, if you could give me a minute to speak to that.
Go ahead, Mr. Kelly.
As I stated, as as I'm sure you know, I have a neighbor that's been a complainant. On the last two sessions. The stairway and the landing. Was was tipped over. Very close to their lot line. I decided to just tip it back where it was. It's still cut off the deck. It's not usable right now. You'd fall right through it if you tried to stand on it. Right now it is lying on the ground. I'd be happy to walk out there with this laptop and and show you where it's lying right now. I wasn't trying to pull anything on anybody. It wouldn't make any sense. How? Why would I do that?
Alls I can tell you is I took photos when I went out there of it. And to make the statement right now that it wasn't usable. Has no basis in reality.
Well, it's not fastened to the deck.
It's not fast.
No, it's not.
It's.
It's it's cut off. Those pictures I showed that I sent to Noreen today represented the way it was until. I think yesterday.
Did you ever think when you when you removed it today, when you removed it today, where did you put it?
I I I tipped it back down, but it's not near their lot line anymore like it was.
So instead of why didn't you do that prior to putting it back in place? It put it.
Well, I did it during a pretty cold day.
Why didn't you put it? You put it today after Bob left.
I'm sorry. I didn't understand that.
I was there at 4:30 today, end of the day. It was directly on top of the sonotubes. It was exactly against the rest of the deck. It was steady. It wasn't something that was just going to fall over. I.
Go ahead.
I I I do not think that this application, the way it's run so far. Could legally even be approved. I think the process it's gone through is as a a complete error. From our original permit. Our original permit was fine. The changes done from that original permit have not followed. Any sort of methodology that we all that we always do. None of it. The submittals aren't there. The drawing that's in the file. That I think might be an elevation. I don't know. And it doesn't even say who drew it. Has a distance on it on 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 the plan of a 3.3 feet. And I've lined it up with something on another plan and it's 5.4 feet. They they don't match. If if I I'm looking at this file right now. If anybody here went in this file, you couldn't understand what the current changes we're looking for. I came in the office yesterday and sat here. And took up Noreen's time and Ashley's time for over an hour trying to figure out. What plan even matches because everything was different. And when a board needs to make a decision. And the only thing they have to review is what's in a public file. And you can't make heads or tail what any of it means. A board can't make a decision. They can't do it. They they haven't been supplied with the correct information. They've been supplied with misinformation. Now, if it fell off and you wanted to move it from the from the neighbors line, you didn't have to move it back onto the deck and the top of the sonotubes. Or you could have called the board and said, be aware, I sent you photographs. And those photographs don't apply anymore because I have moved it back. Even if the other stuff in this plan was correct now and I wanted to vote for this, I couldn't vote for this. Because I know in the file, there are so many errors. That the decision wouldn't mean anything. There's nothing to base it on. And I do think the administrator was trying to help out as best as she could, but she can only go so far with what's been submitted. In my opinion, on this project at this point is there needs to be a reapplication. Based on this file. Submitted. With correct plans, correct measurements, correct documentation, correct photographs of everything you want there. To have you say to me that you're putting in a shower connection. Now that's been there for a while, but you're not going to put a surround about it because they've told you if you do, you have to count it for something. Guess what? Still has to be on our plan. The AC still has to be on our plan. You would if you're submitting it to the building department. And you're saying to the building department, this is my plan. Then the plan you submit here should match exactly what's in the building department. And I know that you've had some complaints with neighbors. We've heard it. We understand there's a two side issue. But. If I was a neighbor right now. And I was watching this hearing. And I found out that you submitted photographs. That something was removed that I had complained about and now it's back. I would have no confidence in this board in this hearing if I was the neighbor. So I can now understand. I wouldn't. Because what you are giving to us. Is wrong. And I don't think and through the chairman, I don't think we can vote on this application. I'm telling you, the information in this file is incorrect.
Just a matter of housekeeping at the moment. It is 9:30. The board's business does conclude at 9:30. So we'll need a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to extend to 10.
May I say one thing before?
Just a moment, Mr. Kel. Just a moment, Mr. Kelly. We need to get this vote done to begin with. All right. So Scott, you. Bade the motion to continue.
I make a motion to go to 10 o'clock, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. So the motion to continue the board's business until 10 o'clock was made by Scott, seconded by Bob. We'll need a roll call vote from everyone. Ed?
Ed, Ben, Karen, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
James?
James Morse, I.
Mary?
Mary, Barry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zlinski, I.
And TJ Harry, I. So the motion passes unanimously. We're continuing until 10 o'clock tonight. Mr. Kelly, you were going to.
Understanding Mr.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Yeah, understanding Mr. Dugan's concerns. I I think everybody gets that point. I think we need to move. My suggestion would be to move on to some discussion on how we address all of that.
I mean, if I might read something to you?
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Kelly. And then we'll get to the board discussion on this.
I sent this to Jonathan Dickson, who was the. Zoning enforcer, I guess. And what I said to him was, and I sent this Sunday. I said, I've just removed the steps and landing in question as zoning would not temporarily extend their use as I build out my living space. They are currently propped up against the deck for safety until my next dump run. Attached to a picture, separated steps. You're welcome to walk in the back and view if you'd like. He said he responded to me that he would forward that to. Noreen Stockman along with the pictures. Which as of today, he hadn't done for he probably got busy. But I did specifically say to him, and and he has a copy of this email, that I had them propped back up against the deck. So I wasn't trying to hide anything from anybody. You can check with his email. There's nothing I can change now on it. But because he didn't send the pictures to Noreen, I I forwarded them to her at her request. And these were pictures taken Sunday after it was removed. Now, I totally agree with the the shower fixture or the wash fixture, wash down fixture, whatever they call it. Again, that's my ignorance. I spoke to Gary Street. Pam brought me in to speak to him. He asked me several questions about it because I was seeking a permit for it. And he said, it's not required. I I should have known that. Actually, I'm kind of new at this, so. I probably should have known that I needed to run that by by zoning.
All right, understood, Mr. Kelly.
In this week?
I'm sorry?
Had you any any discussion with Noreen Stockman this week?
Yes, well, of I.
Who's doing these other things for you? You never thought to ask her that?
I'm sorry, ask her?
About the shower and everything else that you said you plead ignorance to?
Well, again, I I spoke to Gary Street, so it's nothing I was trying to hide. I didn't realize that every everything had to go through zoning. I'm just learning that now. That was the reason why we initially. Got the changes approved through the inspectional services office. And and neglected to bring them by zoning. I just learned that the last meeting that it's a two step process.
When did the shower go in?
It seemed to me. I'm sorry.
When did the shower go in?
The shower's been in for probably a month.
So at our last hearing, and I'm sure you understood. We had lengthy discussion on why. Changes had been made in the building department and why they weren't valid for us because you didn't have a permit here for it. And it seemed and it seemed that after our meeting, you completely understood the fact that. Now you know, as you said, now I'm aware. That if I did a change there, I should have come here. Now let's try to fix it. And between then and now, you never thought, wait a second. There's three or four other changes that also meet that criteria? And I'm not even going to mention it to anybody? That that doesn't fly. And look, mistakes happen. I can understand. You went to the building department, they approved it and you came here. I'll even go with the fact that you had no idea and you came here and said, you know what? I didn't realize I had to come back. So now I am. I would expect you to tell me about the differences in the plan. And quite honestly, your original plan was submitted by your applicant, which was the builder who represented you here. And I'm telling you, the builder that represented you, he knows that any changes that happen down there have to come back here. Because he's dealt with the department.
I called him specifically about that and he said he didn't know that. He thought there was an internal process between inspectional services.
Have him call the administrator's office and and explain to us here. That builder, that he doesn't understand how the process works in the town hall. He has other projects in front of us. He knows how the project works. What I'm trying to say to you is you knew previously in other hearings. That there were changes that needed to come back here. You were aware at that time there were other changes that you made. And instead of even giving the administrator the common courtesy to say. While I'm at it. Are these an issue? Because these are all other other changes that were made. You basically just decided, I'll say nothing. And we'll just see what happens. This is what happens.
I I think what may I think what may.
Sorry, Noreen. Go ahead, Noreen.
Sorry to interrupt, but I think what may work out better here is that. Perhaps Mr. Kelly could come into the office and we could. Get these various details lined up so that all the information is properly correct and bring them back to the board.
I think this needs to be submitted as a brand new application. I'm telling you, this file is a mess.
Right, but it's not. It's not a new application, though. That's the.
Well, then we turn down the application and say this doesn't mean what we can vote on. And now you have to reapply. Well, give him the option. Have him withdraw without prejudice and reapply.
That's that's not going to help you either. I mean, you know, you.
Noreen, right, right, right now, I mean, quite honestly, the administrative approval you have isn't the administrative approval that should have gone in with the other changes there.
Right, the.
You weren't given the information. He just mentioned to us that he's already recorded it.
Right, the the changes that went in on the administrative approval were copies of the plans specifically that the building department had. And had approved. So the point was to have those plans be consistent.
But what I'm saying is they're not consistent. The administrative approval talks about a basement. It leaves out the doorway. It talks about a removal of stair. It doesn't talk about the addition of a doorway. You basically took. Pieces of what he needed approved. And quite frankly, he's not only recorded that, he's already ready to the deed restriction. And we haven't made a decision. I I just don't know how you go through a process as a board. And I've never dealt with something where we do an administrative approval during a hearing because I've never heard of that before.
Right.
What probably should have happened is what probably should have happened is we should have said, look, there's a problem with the application. Suggestion would be. Withdraw without prejudice. Apply for the administrative approval. Then reapply right away for the new application with what he wants with the administration approval in place. And then we can go forward. I don't think this process is legal. I don't. I really don't think this is legal. I think we are in very murky waters right here. And. We're in the middle of an application where we have to make a decision. We either go forward and try to change stuff to see if we can make it work. I don't think we can do it the way this has been done. I don't think we can. Make a decision based on part of an administrative approval that's done now and now he needs to amend it. Because those other changes were done prior to this application. So now he has to amend your administrative approval for the other changes. He's going to do it for the shower, the the other thing in the in the doorways. So now you're going to have two administrative approvals during a hearing. That we haven't made a decision on because we have to have the administrative approvals in before we can approve the new changes. So I I mean, you may want to talk to town council. I don't know, but I think the safest way at this point. And the applicant would have to, it'd be agreeable. Is for him to withdraw without prejudice, then him to apply to you. For administrative approval for what was actually done to that property prior to our last permit. And then he puts a new application in here with that in place. For the new finished space above the garage. We have a hearing on that and make a decision at that point. I just. I. I think this is, I think the process is wrong right now. I think we've gotten misinformation. I think we're being led astray all over the place. And the testimony that comes that's coming in right now is not matching any of the testimony that was given in prior hearings. It's just changing with the wind.
Okay, so regarding interior doors. We have not ever conditioned or placed any type of requirement on interior doors. For any construction that was ever done. Okay, so. I think, you know, we can make sure that the plans are properly updated to show all the changes. We can have Mr. Kelly write out what all the changes are for the board to consider. But I really would not suggest that there would be any need. For a new application here because I think what you're looking at are are changes that were made to the plan.
Do you think that the way we're doing this with these new the administrative approvals during a hearing is legal?
Okay, so the administrative approval was perhaps my misunderstanding that I thought that the board was directing me to take care of that. With the changes that the building department had approved. To update the plans so that you were just finishing the vote for the finish of the space above the garage.
So my understanding was he was going to be making a application to you just like or request just like anyone else would. In writing with plans. When I was here the other day and we reviewed plans, those plans didn't match.
So the again, the plans I had were the plans that were from the building department.
Are correct. I understand. I understand. I understand that what you were supplied with is what the building department had. But that still didn't match our plans. And he didn't submit a new plan to show that they matched. There were different measurements on them. There were different.
So right, so you would like essentially an updated floor plan. To properly reflect and a site plan to properly reflect. Everything that's been done.
Yeah, I I would expect them to supply to you what is required. So that he they would go to you and they would say, this is our request. And along with our request for an administrative approval, this is what we're looking for and this is all the documented plans and descriptions. That back up the administrative approval that we're asking.
It's too late. It's too late for that. He's recorded. He's already recorded that stuff. So it's it's already in the eyes of the court. It's been approved.
No, but. It what's what's been approved administratively isn't all the changes.
I know, but if it's but but what he had, what Mr. Kelly has recorded. In the eyes of the court, now wherever that was recorded. Their assertion is that it has been approved and essentially it has been approved. So you can't go back and unapprove.
So then.
what he's done recorded because he had documentation.
I'm not saying that, but so he's gonna have to
I don't agree that it's right, but I think the horse is out of the barn.
But I think he has to make another administrative request for the other changes that weren't covered in the first one.
So if they're covered under what he had recorded, how do you get that back? Do you unrecord?
They're not. There were only two, there was, there was a partial of, of a basement and a removal of the stair. It didn't include the other items. That's what I'm saying. He still hasn't included all the items.
So you want essentially a supplemental filing to make sure that the totality of changes that were made are delineated on the plans and are reflected on the floor plans and that the plot plan are all the same.
That would make the most sense, Noreen.
So what I would suggest to you would be most rational would be to pick continuation date and ensure that those corrected plans are fully inclusive and would be submitted to you for a future hearing date for a vote.
Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, TJ, I guess I'm real confused here. I thought the process was that somebody comes to us with a plan as what they want to do. And they don't have carte blanche to do all sorts of different changes just because they want to or they didn't think about it, or I, I just keep thinking that this is so wrong because what you're trying to do is fix something and give retroactive approval to it. And it just isn't right. I mean, what, what are we trying to do here? Just give everybody the ability to do anything they want to?
All right, so you also have a problem here where Mr. Kelly has already obtained a building permit for the work that he has done.
All right, and to Mary's point, you, you know, you're not confused. You're absolutely right, Mary. You know, this, this process has been messy. It's been sloppy from the very beginning.
A mockery of the entire process that exists because it isn't a process if this is allowed to happen.
Thank you, Mary. And as, as it stands right now, the application is deficient. I know we have that drafted positive motion, but you know, there's, there's plans that just simply don't match up when it, when it boils down to it, the very, the very basic part of this is that there's plans that don't match the draft decision. So at a bare minimum, that, that would have to be fixed before we could entertain a vote on the application. Anyone else?
Let's just continue it and try to get these issues resolved, as Noreen suggested. I'm happy to move that we continue. What's the date?
So I think where you have added another two cases on to February 25th, you would have to go to I believe March 11 will be your next meeting date.
Okay, so I will move that we continue this to March 11. That should be sufficient time to iron out all these details.
Seconding. All right, so the motion, Scott, I think you're, you're muted.
Scott, you're muted.
Scott, you were completely muted on that.
Before we vote on that, to instruct the applicant to not do anything outside of what's in front of us already before he comes back again. As far as changes or moving this or whatever to make it more convoluted than it already is.
Yeah, no actual changes.
Please.
All right, so that's, uh, that's added on to Ken's motion to continue to
And, and, you know, if, if they, I mean, this should give the applicant adequate time to dispose of, you know, the material that he's detached from the house so that next time Bob goes out there to check, it looks the way he's expecting.
Very good. Is there a second to Ken's motion?
I'll second it.
Yeah, second. All right, more, motion made by Ken to continue to, uh, March 11th. Made, made by Ken, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hury, I. So this is continued to March 11th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, up next, we have a request for insubstantial change, Locus Field LLC, Beach Palm Place, 430 Locus Field Road, application 6-19. Modification. Thank you, Scott. Uh, so Scott is recused from, uh, this request for an insubstantial change. Uh, it's an administrative request, so there's no testimony taken. Uh, and Noreen, would you like to give us the, the latest update here?
Sure, so, um, the request was remanded back from the Housing Appeals Committee for the board to reconsider the changes that you had considered to be substantial. They allowed the applicant to make corrections so that the bonus room, which they had requested over the garage for three market rates and one affordable unit um, had originally been reported as, um, I believe over 700 square feet. The applicant has corrected that to be, um, just over 200 square feet. So the current request before the board is to approve an insubstantial change to allow a bonus room be constructed over three market rate units and one affordable unit. The applicant has also requested the option to finish basement space. I guess there's some question about whether they would move forward with that. They've also asked for some leeway to make some interior changes based on individual homeowner requests. Um, the plan and intent is that all the dwellings will remain strictly as a, as three bedroom homes uh, that cannot be changed and um, as part of the request to have those items approved, the applicant was willing to eliminate the request for the bonus rooms that would have been constructed over the rear decks on all the buildings. And, um, the remand request was forwarded from the Housing Appeals Committee to the board members.
All right, thank you, Noreen, for the update.
So I got a question on the remand request. So was that remand request from the first meeting we had or the second meeting we had?
So apparently, probably due to COVID and how meeting styles are happening or not these days, uh, the remand request was made, um, I believe it was back in December, but we were just receiving it from the Housing Appeals Committee now, so perhaps it is that there's a lag with their paperwork. So this is not a new remand, but we did just finally get the actual paperwork from them.
So on the last hearing we just had, based on the same thing, has that been discussed with the applicant at all, or are we still going on what our last meeting was?
So one of the items that the board had requested from the applicant was um, floor plan layout changes that they anticipated for houses. Um, that has not been provided to us. You know, what, what they're intending, like I said, is not wholesale changes to houses, but some would typically be an administrative minor modification.
So at our last meeting, we asked for that information because we said without it, we didn't have the proper information to make a decision. And they've decided not to supply us with the information?
Right, so apparently their primary intention now is that they are not specifically intending to make interior changes. Um, but they have requested permission to do that. Um, you know, it's my understanding again that the changes are minor in nature. I did have one applicant who reached out to me directly and basically stated that they felt that the bathroom on the second floor was very undersized. And would it be acceptable that the bathroom be expanded slightly by taking some of the floor space that would have been devoted to the upstairs bedroom? So in your typical cases that you hear, that would typically be an administrative approval for a minor change.
I mean, to me, as long as they're not adding bedrooms, they want to make adjustments interior. Who cares?
And, and your, your bedroom count is essentially a deed restriction. You have filed a comprehensive permit that has specified that the bed, the bedroom count cannot be increased.
And they've made some concession on the bonus room, it sounds like.
So have they actually made concession or they haven't now?
So they have offered as part of this negotiation to take off the table, the possibility that the rear deck would be improved as a screen porch or as a sunroom.
I think that's quite significant.
So if we agreed to that, what would we need to put in that this is the, the agreed upon um, insubstantial change is based on the deletion of any room in place of the deck?
Right, so what you would be saying is that you are essentially accepting their proposal for the three markets and the one affordable to have the bonus room over the garage and that there can be, um, some interior changes made without changing or affecting the bedroom count in any way. And that they were willing, as I said, part of this negotiation to forego the bonus room on the rear of the dwellings.
Okay.
The other thing I like about that is it's more enforceable because someone starts closing the deck, you're gonna know it.
Yeah.
They're shifting around interior walls.
That's true. And 10 o'clock came pretty quickly. I know that Scott made the original motion to continue the board's business till 10.
So motion to, yeah, motion to increase to 10:15.
All right, motion to go to 10:15, made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken? We'll go to James.
I don't think 10:15 is going to be enough time. We got, we also have something here for Forest Cove, right?
It's gonna 10:30.
Okay.
But hope for 10:15.
All right, Bob's, uh, making the modification of the motion to go to 10:30. That was seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
James?
James Morse, I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
And TJ Hury, I. So passes unanimously. We're going to 10:30. All right, sorry, guys. Uh, back to the discussion on Locus Field.
Well, I mean, they're giving up the, the room in the back, which like Ken said, would be more, you know, intrusive to the neighbors anyways. If it's minor layout changes, I don't see an issue with it. I would like to have something that just says that there would be no sleeping, um, in the basements if they're finishing off space. Just because there's been fire issues in like Seacoast and these other areas where basements have been a problem.
All right, I think that's fair, Bob. And to Ken's point, it was a significant significant concession of them eliminating that space out back. Uh, I had some concerns about how close in proximity they would be to, uh, the abutters after that, so. Anyone, anyone else want to weigh in? Oh, with, um, with Scott recusing, I need to appoint a voting member. I'll give that one to, uh, James.
I, I think, and I'm not sure, but when we did this, does it, does it matter each time? Because I think Mary was placed.
Yeah, I was gonna say you actually had appointed Mary before.
I'm so, okay, so.
So she's sort of in the middle of the swim here.
Apologies, Mary, for the sake of consistency. I'll have, uh, I'll have you as the voting member. All right, any other discussion to be had? All right, would anyone like to make a motion?
So I guess we would move that, uh, we accept these uh, proposed changes, uh, as insubstantial and, uh, approve them.
You want to be on the concession, though?
Yeah, so then you'd have to put, which would allow the bonus room above the garage on three market rate and one affordable.
Not to exceed 200, is 200 square feet?
Uh, it is, I believe it's just over. I will verify the exact square footage.
Okay, so X, whatever it is, square footage.
It's just, just over.
Then you could put the option to finish basement space and make minor interior changes to layout uh, with no sleeping area allowed in basements.
And, and no increase, obviously, in bedroom count.
No increase in bedroom count at three. And they would forego any option for bonus rooms where the decks would be or however.
No construction, right, no construction of, no enclosing of the deck space.
Very good.
Do we have to put in that, just like we're doing the app, on the regular permits and, and any, any, any changes beyond that have to come back here again? Do you have to repeat that again or no?
Uh, it's certainly reasonable to do that.
All right, so that was, that was Ken's motion for an insubstantial change, uh, with those conditions as stated. Was there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Bob. Roll call vote, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hury, I. Uh, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay. Up next, we have a request for insubstantial change, application 35-07 Forest Cove condominium trust slash Evans, uh, 637 Gifford Street in Falmouth. A request to allow a 24 by 34 inch sign. Uh, so we all have a copy of it of what's proposed. I think mine fell on the floor. There it is.
Can you hold it up? Okay.
So that's for what, the main entrance?
Yes.
That's 24 inches, not feet.
Inches is correct.
Here's the proposed location.
Probably two feet by three.
Yeah. Seems reasonable.
All right. Is it replacing a sign that's already there? I don't recall anything actually.
Yeah.
The sign that was there was a real estate sign.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, okay.
Yeah, so they did
They finally sold all the units.
Yeah. They did not have a sign as part of their comprehensive permit. And so this is essentially a modification of that permit to allow placement of the sign.
Good.
I'll, I'll move we accept it. It's insubstantial change.
Seconding it.
All right, so the motion was made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelensky, I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hury, I. So the motion passes unanimously as an insubstantial change. Okay. Board discussion, is there anything?
Um, there is one, one item, I guess. Um, I'm not sure where, if we have a roll in the I'm not sure where, if we have a role in this, but there are some proposed changes to the solar overlay district that are coming up before the planning board on the 8th. In particular, this this would increase the amount of land that could be cleared and reduce the buffers for solar projects. Which, in my view, is not a good idea because, you know, you're if you're clearing forest, you're basically undoing the benefits of the solar by converting all that stored carbon back into CO2, so. The bylaw currently limits the amount of land that'd be cleared for any solar project by to two acres, which seems quite reasonable. And this would change it to 20%, so of the total area, which, you know, if you've got 100 acres that you're converting to solar, that's a lot of clearing. So I just thought I'd bring that up and and see. You know, we could have a presence at the hearing if you want. If the board feels it's a bad idea, we could say the zoning board feels it's a bad idea.
I know there is a proposal that's being presented to the town where a now defunct golf course is being proposed space by that that golf courses or the land of the golf courses being part proposed as a potential site for a solar array.
Interesting.
So you would have land, obviously, fairways and whatnot that would be already cleared, but there obviously would be additional clearing that would take place.
Right. But this is what always happens is when a specific project comes up, the attorneys come and try to modify the existing bylaw, which was carefully crafted and thought out so that they can do the project the way they want to do it. And then, of course, once the bylaws change for that project, it's changed throughout the town. So I just feel it's a bad idea in general to change bylaws that were made with some thought and consideration for a particular project. And then, you know, now you've got a whole new standard that basically applies broadly.
So what do you need from us, Ken?
Well, I guess what we could do is just, we could send a letter to the planning board, Noreen could do that. I'd be, you know, happy to draft it or the chairman.
I was gonna just suggest that you were drafted.
Say, you know, saying that we we believe that the bylaw is good as it stands and should not be altered. Because I do think they came up with quite a nice bylaw. There's, you know, you can create this solar overlay district in areas where it's appropriate. So let's say you've got a defunct gravel pit, you know, something like that. And maybe that's a fine place to put a solar array, but probably not someplace where that's currently forested or that's even partially forested, where you'd have to do a lot of clearing.
So what do you need? Do you need us to vote on it?
I think it wouldn't hurt if.
I'd move it.
Sure. Just to, just for everyone to chime in, would would everyone be in support of that?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
All right. Okay, would anyone like to make the motion? Mary, I think you were going in that direction.
Yeah, I I make a motion that we draft a letter and provide it to the planning board in opposition of changing the bylaw for as it currently exists for solar arrays and the required amount of land that's appropriate.
All right, who's drafted it?
What, my my motion?
The chairman can appoint whoever they wants to to draft it, that's fine. And the only thing I would bring up that, you know, is if if then there is a real, let's say we vote this and then a real case comes before us at some point in the future, does that compromise us in any way? That's a question.
Well, so I think you don't want to pick a particular proposal. I think it is certainly reasonable for the board to opine on your position or thoughts. And that certainly if a proposal came before you, you would have to evaluate that on its own merits.
I thought there was one. Well.
Hasn't come before us yet.
I I don't know that.
No, I meant, I meant the changes to the bylaw.
Oh, there's proposal for changes to the bylaw.
So we.
Noreen's saying if there was a particular solar array proposal, which apparently she's aware of.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, so.
Hasn't, it hasn't come before us yet.
Okay, so I don't see where that's any kind of an issue at all. Because all we can do is we make sure that whatever's before us, we apply the law, the bylaws. So there's, it's not like it would be something where we our our independence would be compromised if that's what you're asking.
Yeah. Or that, you know, that there there would be a perceived bias.
No.
Okay. I guess we have the motion, right?
No, no, it's been seconded.
So we just need the chair to call for the vote.
I think the chairman might have frozen.
Oh, he does. He looks totally frozen. Are you unfrozen? TJ? Uh oh, here he is. Are you back?
I'm back, completely, completely froze.
Did you see the call in the vote?
Completely got kicked out there. All right, so that was Mary with the motion, right? Okay, anyone second that?
I second it.
All right, roll call vote, ooh. The squares are all changed now that I jump back. Scott, you first.
Gottselski, I.
All right, Mary.
Mary Berry, I.
Ed.
Ed Van Kier and I.
James.
James Morse, I.
Ken.
Ken Forman, I.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
And TJ Hari, I. So that passes unanimously. All right. Anything else for board discussion?
Yeah, Terry, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
I have a quick, I have a quick request and then a a quick question. Is there any kind of venue that that you would propose or that would be legal that the board could meet in some sort of executive session to discuss procedural issues within the board and how we communicate with our administrator? I think it's a little unfair at times that we expect so much of them without having direct contact on how we do it collectively. And I think that that direct disconnect is becoming more apparent as we continue to stack up cases. Is there a legal venue that we can speak as a group on how we do things procedurally to help clean this up? Because I really believe we need to clean our game up a little bit. It's it's getting to a point where we have so much work in front of us in so many cases that I think I think on occasion that the administrator is getting, it's like drinking out of a fire hose from us and you can only you can only perform at a certain level with what you have and unless we identify exactly what we want and collectively talk about how we do that to help them succeed, I think we're gonna be in trouble going down the road.
Right.
Right behind me.
That's a person. But I can see it happening to us.
I agree.
Understood. So very quickly, executive session, there's only seven or eight specific reasons why a board can meet an executive session. So I would have to take a look and see if that would apply.
Yeah, I think that.
But.
You'd have.
Yeah, we we might have an issue meeting under executive session, but I know what the board has done in the past. We we try to meet yearly on a Saturday morning, have breakfast together and hash out some, you know, procedural things like, yeah, like a workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the past, we've we've reviewed procedure and things like that, Scott. So I think maybe maybe we're due to have that again. I know with COVID and everything kind of threw off our usual schedule. So maybe in the next, maybe Scott, I think you're on to something. If we could look maybe in the next couple of months and see what our availability might be on a Saturday morning, we can all meet via Zoom and.
It's either that or I could certainly check on venues. The selectmen's meeting room is limited to eight people. So that would not probably work for all of us. But, you know, we might be able to find even, you know.
There's seven of us plus you, that's that's fate.
Well, and then there's Ashley and.
And don't we have to have somebody, another representative there? We have to leave it open, right?
Well, it would, it would have to be a public, duly duly noticed public meeting, so.
So so that's my request. My question is, where are we with meeting with the building commissioner and the the administrator? How is that gonna go?
So currently, we're looking at a date in March where the building commissioner will meet with the board in full. There has been a recommendation that there be a smaller meeting prior to that that would include, say, two board members to review some details prior to that meeting in March.
And that request was made by whom?
I think there's been a couple of parties that have been circulating discussions.
Would one of them be town council?
Yes.
Okay, so that is, that's another part of this. In in the event that we have issues with our town council, how do we know how we get represented? If we're running, if we're running under their, under their recommendations, if we ever have to go as a result of our conversation and we oppose something that's happening, how do we decide who are, who who represents us if if we're dictated by town council, if we don't speak about it beforehand?
So I would guess that if there was a request for outside council, that would be run through the town manager.
But then the first question town council would need to answer is if there was this first meeting with a smaller group of people, out of that group, who did he, who does he represent? And then if he said he didn't represent us, then we'd have to make a request. Because if we have a meeting the way I think, town council could represent one of three different parties. So he's gonna, they're gonna have to identify either way which party they represent, which department, which entity, et cetera. So we know where we stand. And if they inform us.
We go in, before we go in and the door gets locked behind.
We we need to know in advance. If we have and if we have meetings with other boards or selectmen or anybody that town councils in with the meetings with us, we need to know in advance who is he representing because he can represent anyone. And if he decides he's representing somebody specific and it's not us, then legally we get, they can't say we can't have representation because they passed.
Noreen, it wouldn't be the first time that he did, they didn't represent us.
It must happen all the time. I mean, I can't assume this is a once in a blue moon situation.
We go through the board of selectmen.
We do, the problem is town council.
Is our representative gonna be present from the board of selectmen at this meeting?
Oh, that's an interesting question.
Our liaison?
Who is our liaison these days? Is it still, you said Doug Jones?
Yes, yeah. I am not aware as to whether the member of the select board would be present, but I did pass along that request.
And along those lines, if if he's not allowed, is that his determination or town council says he can't be there for that? That's that's the questions we have to find out before we go into these these meetings. And my my basic question is, how do we, how do we answer these questions and discuss it amongst ourselves to be able to go in there and know exactly where we stand and how we're represented? Because I think we only have one shot at this to explain our desire for help with some of these issues. And I don't know if that, if if I explain that in its true meaning, but I I think that this is our one and only chance to be able to tell them that we recognize that there are some issues that have to be addressed and how do we, you know, we need to work together to address them. But we're serious about getting them addressed.
You know, I would, I would think initially that town council would essentially be party to try and help iron out issues as opposed to representing someone specifically.
I guess that's my question.
Do you think it's fair that every board member isn't represented equally in these negotiations? These, this meeting?
You know, it's it's been represented to me that they would like a small meeting, which would include two zoning board members prior to the full board meeting in March.
Because they want to know what we're going to say prior to our meeting? Are we gonna be, are we gonna be cornered into telling them what the agenda's gonna be?
Well, wait a minute, what what is the purpose of having a pre-meeting? What is the purpose?
That's what my question is.
Yeah, I mean, it's as simple as that. What's the purpose? And and the question, I guess, gets to be, first of all, I'm never sure exactly if it's clear to me what the purpose of a lot of these meetings have been. So I I would think that if anybody wanted to have a pre-meeting, what they should be doing is is not not doing this to people from here and to people from there. It's more about what are the issues and putting down the issues that need to be dealt with, not not how many people and which are our favorite people to ask and that kind of thing.
I think they're trying to avoid quorum issues.
Who cares then? You can do it under your open meeting law and do and do it appropriately. Why are we always trying to get around these things?
You know, more frank discussion.
I know. Well, that's silly. It's silly. I mean, I I thought at some meeting, and it was months and months ago, was when there was warmer weather out, we were talking about people having coffee with other people and some kind of interaction between planning and us. And I I don't understand why this stuff doesn't just happen. And there's this thing of, well, we only can have two people representing the the zoning board. What what is that? We're a board. We're a board of more than two people.
Right. I think the initial request for two people, as Ken pointed out, was related to a quorum. The other part was that if a specific case were to be discussed, that that would not be something that you could do at a regular, open, public meeting without proper notice to any parties involved.
Well, wouldn't that be stipulated prior to that meeting as ground rules?
I guess it could, I guess.
Publicly.
I guess it could be.
You can have a meeting and then open it up to the public.
Instructed by the chair to not impugn anybody's reputation, then that's a pretty simple statement.
So the other question I have is when we ever, if we ever do a meeting or what we do, we are going to have to discuss a multitude of specific projects. There's no way around it. We can't speak.
Right, but you, but you cannot do that at a public meeting.
I understand. So what I'm saying is.
Actually, a question, Noreen, what what's the rule on past projects? Like, okay, the decision's been made, the project's done, it's no longer under consideration, but it provides an example of something that either went right or went wrong. Is there, is there a prohibition against that?
I I can certainly check on that. I mean, very clearly, if something was currently active, that would be a no.
Right.
You know, I guess the question is that if you talk about my property, and even though I've already been voted, if, you know, something is said that I find objectionable at a public meeting. if, you know, something is said that I find objectionable at a public meeting, what, what is my recourse? Because I wasn't noticed that you were going to be discussing my address.
So. And are we responsible for our own conduct if we do that?
Well, I think the intent is to have some initial discussions to kind of preview what the board's concerns and issues are and then navigate what the process would be from there.
So here's the question I have, cause this is getting a little screwball. First of all, we discussed at our last meeting that we had on a Saturday, all sorts of things that were decisions that we had had issues with. As if I, if I recall, we had head of planning there.
Oh, you had the planner.
And we also had Julian and Susan. He was there as well. And there was an awful lot of discussion about concerns that we had at that meeting. And it wasn't, we didn't have to have a pre-meeting of two of the people to talk about it. If, I don't know what we're proposing to talk about, but if we're proposing to talk about personnel issues, that's an executive session.
Right.
It's clear. If we're not going to do that, I don't know what it is that we're proposing to talk about. I mean, there's plenty to talk about, but I'd like it to be crystal clear. What it is, because otherwise you go into a meeting and you just waste everybody's time. Kind of like some of these meetings have become.
I would love to go into negotiation every time and know what was gonna be on the table before I got there, but that, life isn't like that.
Yes, but, but you don't hold a meeting not knowing what you wanna talk about.
Well, no, that's exactly my point. I would love that to be the case every time I did a negotiation, but it doesn't work like that. And that's what this feels like to me. They wanna know what we're gonna talk about in, in, in a, in a group meeting.
Well, well, I agree with what you're saying, but what I'm saying is no matter what, we should have it outlined. There has to be an agenda. You have to have an agenda for things.
I agree. And.
Mr. Chairman, it's 10:30.
Thank you, Scott. I was just about to say that we hit 10:30.
Move to adjourn.
All right, move to adjourn. But Mary, I, I agree with everyone said. I'm sorry, my internet connection was dipping out, but, um, yeah, we do need to nail down what we're gonna talk about.
So how are we leaving this? Just so I know, versus just end?
There's a motion on the table.
To adjourn?
Yes.
So, so that.
We're not gonna resolve this.
Again.
We're not gonna resolve it tonight.
And that's what happened last time.
But you've raised, you've raised it. It's good.
Whatever.
Well, can we respond to them that we don't feel comfortable with the, with the two-person solution? Give us another suggestion.
I'm glad to do that.
All right. Why don't we just do that then?
Then I'll second Ken's motion to adjourn.
I think Ed already did. Oh, all right.
All right. Uh, when's the next meeting? February 11th? See everyone then, meeting adjourned.
Good night. Thank you.
Night. Thanks, guys.